Okay. Looks like everybody's here. We are ready to start. Good afternoon. Welcome to the 4:39 session of the September 21st, 2021, meeting of the City Council. I have a few announcements and then we'll move on to our meeting. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on television, Community Television Channel 25, and streaming on the city's website, cityofSantaCruz.com. If you wish to comment on an item today, then at the beginning of the item you are wanting to comment on, using the instructions on your screen. Please mute your television or streaming device once you call in and listen through the phone. Please note, there is a delay in streaming, so if you continue to listen on your television or streaming device, you may miss your opportunity to speak. When it is time for public comment, press star in on your phone to raise your hand. And when it is time to speak during public comment, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted. The timer will then be set to two minutes. You may hang up once you have commented on your item of interest. And I would like to ask the clerk to please call roll.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Watkins?
Here.
Calentari Johnson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Holder?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brunner?
Present.
And Mayor Myers is currently absent.
Okay. I'd like to call on the city attorney to provide a report on closed session, please.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Brunner, and members of the City Council. The council met briefly in closed session this afternoon to consider one item involving potential initiation of litigation, or reportable action.
All right, moving on. First up is the consent agenda. These are items number two and three on the agenda. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, now is the time to call if you want to comment on items two or three. Instructions are on your screen. Please remember to mute your streaming device. Press star nine to raise your hand, and listen for the cue saying you've been unmuted. All items will be acted upon in one motion unless an item is pulled by a council member for further discussion. Are there any council members who wish to comment on or pull any items? I see Councilmember Brown.
I just have a question, and there may be different, specific answers because they're different state emergency conditions. But I just have a kind of a general question about the process for this, when the time is appropriate.
Okay. And Councilmember Cummings?
I have questions about items two and three related to declarations of states of emergency. And so I don't know if they're the same as Councilmember Brown's, but I do have questions that have come to my intention about declarations of states of emergency.
I'm happy to have any questions. Councilmembers have responded to. I will ask Mary Haley to enter the meeting. And...
Good afternoon.
Yes, this is Mary Haley Ausley. She's an associate in our office, and she assisted or prepared the agenda report and the resolutions, and can respond to any questions, Councilmember.
Thank you. I'll just be real quick, if I could. So I guess I'm just wondering, and we've been in a seemingly perpetual state of emergency for a while now, really. I don't mean just legally. And, but, we are kind of, seem to be in this somewhat of a longer, the longer-term phase of, you know, what's happening here. And so I guess I'm just wondering, are there some set of criteria that are used to determine, you know, an emergency, not an emergency? I mean, you know, you kind of, like, you know it when you feel it, you know, you know when you see it. But how do we know, you know, and what will determine when bringing, you know, extension of the emergency declarations, if nothing else happens for another emergency to occur? So are, just like, what, how you'd make those decisions? It would be helpful to know a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. To my understanding, there's no set terms when an emergency ends. A lot of it is up to the council's discretion as well. So there isn't a set especially for something like COVID, where this is probably a hundred-year pandemic. So it's really when the council decides there's no longer an emergency.
I would just add to that. At this point in time, the primary reason for continuing to renew the emergency declaration, well, there are two really, both because the governor has not lifted the state declaration of emergency. And the second is really the primary impetus at this point is to maximize the city's potential recovery of FEMA or other state emergency funds. And so, so that's the real impetus for continuing the state of emergency declaration.
Yeah, which I appreciate that that was included in the report. If there's just kind of, well, we've been doing this, and we're going to keep, and we're doing it again. So I appreciate the, a little bit more clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cummings, did you have additional questions?
I, that answered most of my questions, and I'd also, but I also wanted to ask, you know, as it relates to the CZU fire. It makes total sense to me for the pandemic, why we'd want to continue that declaration, because it's still like unforeseen what kind of impacts are going to hit the city and just to help recuperate some of those funds. But I'm just curious, because now it seems like, you know, the fire happened about a year ago, and, you know, the fire's never really made it to the city, although we were part of that response effort and really helped with evacuations of victims. Is, so I'm just kind of curious, you know, what, as it relates to the fires, and the rationale behind the extension of the state of emergency.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think for the CZU complex fire, quite a bit of it is, is that now we're in a historic drought, and so we have historically dry vegetation, in addition to, I think that, um, sorry.
Right, let me, let me jump in, Mary Haley. There's, the, Mary Haley is correct. With historic drought conditions following the fire, we want to be careful. But the, but the bigger issue, I think, is impact to the watershed from the fire, and not knowing what's coming this winter in terms of rainfall or not. The burnout areas will cause problems with the watershed. So that's, that's really the major potential impact that the Water Department in particular is concerned about.
Thank you for that. That helps, because I was, it wasn't clear. But now, that makes total sense, you know, given the fact that we have the potential for debris flows since we didn't have major rain last year. Some of those areas are still pretty sensitive to that. So, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, now we can move on to public comment. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak on any item of the consent agenda, now is the time to do so. Or nine, to raise your hand. When it is your time to speak, you will hear an announcement that you've been unmuted. The timer will then be set for two minutes. And I don't see any members of the public with their hands raised. Oh wait, we have one phone number ending in 0711. Star six, to unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Sophia Alacon. I'm a citizen of Santa Cruz. I live in my Voke. I'm calling to, sorry, I'm kind of nervous. I'm calling to voice my opposition for the oversized vehicle ordinance.
Um, and I, we will be having comments on that a little later in the agenda. Right now, we're taking public comment on items two and three, resolutions extending emergency declarations in connection with CZU August Lightning Complex Fire by 60 days, and in connection with the COVID-19 pandemic by 60 days. So if you can stay on the line, and we'll hopefully get back to you when we come to that point in the agenda. I will move on to, Reggie, go ahead and press star six, to unmute yourself.
Hi. I really liked the question that Councilmember Brown asked about the extension of the city manager's emergency powers. And I'm just wondering why this isn't kind of being questioned more? I mean, this is kind of a big gift of power to the city manager. And it's not as though the city manager controls, you know, health and human services, as we're constantly reminded, right? So, you know, this, what is exactly he doing for the pandemic? Why does he need to have this power right now? He doesn't seem to, with houseless folks, doesn't seem to be housing anyone, doesn't seem to take this responsibility in any positive way. So I'm just wondering if we can get an explanation about why the city manager has this power right now? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to call in, comment on items two and three on the agenda? Okay, I see that Mayor Myers is present. And are you ready to take over?
Yeah, so are we ready? I would assume we are ready to look for a motion on item number three. I've got, thank you, Vice Mayor, for covering for me. I see Councilmember Watkins, and then followed by Councilmember Cummings.
Yeah, I'm happy to move items two and three on our consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, great. We have a motion to approve the resolution extending by 60 days, the declaration of emergency in connection with the COVID-19 pandemic. Motion by Councilmember Watkins, and seconded by Councilmember Cummings. And could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Watkins?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brunner?
Aye.
And Mayor Myers?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. We'll now move into our general business agenda for the evening. Next up on the agenda is item number four, the 2021 Water Department Long Range Financial Plan and Water Rate Schedule for Fiscal Year 2023 to 2027. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you want to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. The order for this item tonight will be a presentation of the item by our staff, followed by questions from the council. Then we will take public comment, and then return to the council for deliberation and action. I'll go ahead and turn this over, I believe, to Rosemary Menard, who's our acting city manager, as well as our water director. And so we'll go ahead and turn this over to you, Rosemary. Thank you, thank you for the, for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Myers, Vice Mayor Brunner, and members of the council. I really appreciate this opportunity to bring forward. I think this is my sort of last, for a little while, specifically to water. I do, I'm keeping my hand in a few things, and this is one of them. And I do want to acknowledge, as I'm starting the presentation, that we have a number of members of the Water Commission as panels tonight. So I hope there'll be an opportunity, if they have things that they would like to contribute. They've been our partners in a fairly long journey that started about a year and a half ago to look at our long-range financing and to update our financial plan, our capital program, our revenue requirements, and our rate study, so for the next several years. Also, tonight, the presentation tonight, we'll be talking to, we'll be hearing from the Rattell Consulting team, and with their presentation about their rates specifically. So tonight, we're asking the council to do three things. The Department's 2021 Long Range Financial Plan. This is an update of the plan that the council adopted on June 14th of 2016. And I think it's a really important document for us because it lays out in a fairly detailed way the, you know, what our needs are and what the issues are we're trying to manage, and what the plan is for how we're going to get from where we are to where we want to go. Approve the proposed water rate schedule for 2023 to 2027 for use in a proposition to a 18 public notice process. And in your packet, materials have been a copy of the proposed notice that would be distributed to all of our customers here relatively shortly, and we'll start the 45-day public review and formal protest period. And then to set the public hearing for November 23rd, where you would actually receive the protest that might be filed, and also take action on the rates based on feedback that you've received, et cetera. So that's the overview of what we're asking the council to do. Presentation is basically in two parts. I'm going to do a presentation of the Long Range Financial Plan and talk to you about various aspects of the Department's finances, and what our needs assessments are, and how that looks going forward. And then Rattell's, Sanjay Ghar, from Rattell Consulting, is going to present in some detail the details of the water rate proposed that are being proposed, including something that I think we talked about a little bit at the April 6th meeting, which is infrastructure reinvestment fees, and how we should collect those, and also drought cost recovery fees, which are important to us because we are proposing to continue a very high-volume-based rate, which is important to our community, but has some consequences that we mitigate and manage for. So with that, I'm going to launch into the conversation about the, the presentation about the Long Range Financial Plan. And at the end of that, maybe we'll take a pause and see if there are questions from the council, also maybe hear if there are any comments from the Water Commission, and then we'll move to the second part. So, I want to, this presentation really talks about something that's really important. And as I've taken on this new role as senior interim city manager, I'm seeing the opportunity to use today's presentation to talk about financial planning and the conceptual model we're using for the Water Department in the context of larger financial planning and decision-making for the city as a whole. So this, I may be pointing out opportunities where you'll be hearing some things as we go forward in looking at our fiscal '23 budget for the whole city that would build on some of the concepts and principles that we're laying out here. I'm going to describe a little bit about some of the key inputs and outputs, the operating and capital that we have as major inputs, our financial policies that we're using that are also big drivers of our financial planning effort, but also have impacts on our revenue requirements. And then revenue forecasts. These revenue forecasts for the next five years, beginning with fiscal '23, are really the key to the process that Rattell Consulting has taken, which is cost of service analysis, and then using revenue forecasts for the future years to develop actual rates that would be necessary to recover the forecasted revenues. I do want to mention, as I, as I go here, go down into this process, that this work is very aligned with the interim recovery plan, the re-envisioned Santa Cruz and specific areas. One is fiscal sustainability. This happens to be fiscal sustainability of a large enterprise fund that is operated by the, by the city and that fully funds all the sub-water department's expenses. And also, infrastructure investment. There's a very significant driver of that here in front of you that is related to investments and reinvestment in water system infrastructure that is designed to give us a reliable, resilient, and climate-adapted water system for the future. So these are things that I think are very aligned with the interim recovery plan efforts that you've undertaken. So here's the financial planning conceptual model, and I really want to talk about this in terms of this box up here, which is the financial plan input. This is the what and why question. What are we going to do? What do we need to do? Why do we need to do those things? And to some degree, what are some of the goals associated with why we need to do, you know, like, financial reserves or pay-as-you-go capital versus capital, and those kinds of decisions? Why are we doing those kinds of things? And the second part of it is the long-term financial plan that you've seen as part of your packet. This is the big picture. How much do we need to raise? How much are our revenue requirements going forward? And that, as I mentioned, is the input into the rate-setting inputs, where we make key assumptions about the volume of water sales, about the result of the cost of service analysis that allocates to different customer classes, how much each customer class needs to contribute to the total rate revenue. And then look at rate structure design and redesign as appropriate. And then we get proposed rates. And these are the how and the customer class-specific how much. So these are the elements of the plan that, you know, we want to talk about, and I want to share with you some of the major inputs. I want to also suggest that there's two places where values, community values, are really important. One of them is in the financial policies and goals area. It's like, what are important things? In another setting, you might be talking about what level of contributions do you want the county to make to support, to support things like recreation programs? And, you know, how do we want to balance those values in terms of being, maintaining accessibility for our customers who want to use those recreation programs? So in thinking about how this kind of model applies to other situations, you can think about financial policies and goals as things related to those kind of decisions that the council would make that are value-laden. Similarly, over here in the rate-setting input, the council members participated a few months ago in a process of prioritizing water pricing objectives. That's a value-laden discussion. And your answers were basically integrated into the choices that's made by the Water Commission, and the recommendations that came from the Water Commission to you on this topic, and were incorporated into the rate design process. And Rattell's will be talking about that a little bit more as we get down into their part of the presentation. So just as a summary of the level of input, this is the operating forecast for the next five years. We do this thing based on the typical breakdowns you would see as part of anybody's budget. And a lot of what we do is based on a set of inflation factors that are different for different parts of the cost. So we have salaries and wages, and we have a certain inflation factor built in, benefits, operating supplies, and chemicals, energy, and then all other categories. So those revenue forecasts and requirements for the operating side of the house are driven by existing experience, as well as the forecast needs that we have that are influenced by these inflation factors. And then we have the capital program. And this is really the driver of so much of what we're doing these days. You can see that this is almost $271 million over the next five years. This money, there's no doubt about it. As you can see in some of the line items here, there are some very large projects, similar in size and scale to the current project that's going on up at the Mill Creek Dam, where we're putting in a new inlet-outlet structure for the dam that has a $103 million price tag. And there are other projects that are, you know, more sort of in a scale that sort of seems more doable. It's, you know, it's raw water diversion at some of our structures, out on the coast structures, or at the Tate intake, and also groundwater. But together, they add up into a pretty darn robust and expensive, you know, commitment that we're trying to fund for improving our capital projects. We talked a little bit about these projects and these programs with the council members at the April 6th meeting, where we talked to you about the process we went through with the Water Commission and the subcommittee of the Water Commission to look at different alternatives for how we might, you know, phase out these projects to sort of address a number of, you know, both practical limitations. You can't build everything at once because the water system has to keep operating during the entire time that you're building all these things. And you also have to sort of try to spread them out to sort of, you know, minimize and manage the rate impacts that are, that are associated with them. But these are the, these are the capital programs and the sort of total amount from the council's direction to us to use these figures that came out of the April 6th meeting. We had a few. A number of things we use here are our financial reserve goals. These are incredibly important to us in both adaptive management. The rate stabilization reserve, for example, has been the source for us to make up for lower sales than anticipated as a result of the pandemic. So this, this process that we put in place in 2016 to create a more robust rate stabilization reserve has really paid off and given us some capability to adapt to things as we've gone forward. We do have a operating reserve that is sort of two different spots involving about 180 days of cash. These are really important to indicating to our credit rating agencies and to people who might be looking at loaning us money, whether it's the state revolving loan fund, or it's a federal WISA program with a water infrastructure, innovation and finance infrastructure agency that has been created over the last number of years, or whether it's the debt market, the capital markets, that we do go and approach for loans and, you know, use of that loan money to invest in the capital system. In addition, the emergency reserve is a really important thing for us to have. Three million, when you have a billion dollars worth of infrastructure, is not terribly robust. But it did help us to get through a number of issues, partly related to the fire, and also related to a couple of, we had a disaster in our water quality lab that resulted in a requirement to do some rehabilitation and replacement of some facilities there that, that was paid for out of the emergency reserve. These revenue requirements, when put together, produce annual revenue requirements that you can see here laid out. There is a kind of a lumpy process here. It's based on the idea that we've got a lot of capital projects that are coming due in FY '24 and FY '25. Normally, you would like to sort of level these out. If you did level it out, it would be about 10.8% a year. But unfortunately, the cash flow doesn't really allow it, of the way these projects are laid out, doesn't really allow us to level this out. So this is the proposal of how we would go forward with the revenue requirements and with the sort of ratings increases year-over-year for revenue. with the sort of rating increases year-over-year for revenue requirements. I'm going to sort of talk, there's a big section in the middle here, but while I have the floor, I'm going to talk a little bit about risk management, mitigating the risk of a heavily volume-based rate structure. And I mentioned this before when we talked a little bit about the COVID impacts to our lower-than-normal water sales. So we're recommending a continuation of the dollar per CCF SARS that's associated with the increase in the rate stabilization reserve. It helps us mitigate the effects of changes in water use patterns from any number of variety things that aren't drought-related. And then we are recognizing that, you know, it's really important for us to establish that charge and maintain it. There's some provisions in the financial plan that talks about what we will do with money that's raised over the $10 million goal in the event that we get there. And you'll see that there's been thought through in terms of how we can best utilize those resources to help mitigate some of the impacts that we're facing throughout the, you know, through our whole sort of financial situation in the water department. And then the second part is the drought cost recovery fee. This is our current plan for reducing or curtailing demand during drought is basically can have a significant effect on our ability to raise revenue. And unfortunately, if we had a, you know, a more sort of fixed cost-based revenue structure, rate structure, we would be mitigating some of this automatically, but we'd also not be maintaining the ability to make water affordable for essential use. And that, you know, having the current structure we have where there is a relatively low fixed charge monthly and then the associated use-based charges is really makes it for someone who's not using very much water more accessible and more affordable. And so those are, the drought cost recovery fee is something that we have designed and had in place since 2014, actually, that allows us, when the council declares a shortage, to implement this fixed fee and to collect it over a 12-month period to help us be, maintain sort of revenue neutral. It's not a very popular fee, as you can imagine, and we don't like to use it, but given the financial commitments we have, it's really a tool that we need to have in our toolbox. And I've mentioned this basically already about using about $3.8 million from the rate stabilization reserve for COVID and that we did use the drought cost recovery fees from July 2014 through June of 2016. And as I said, it's spread out over 12 months to mitigate the monthly impact on customers. And coming back, I want to just sort of summarize again. We've been through a fairly detailed process of looking at what our operating capital budgets are and, you know, sort of assessing the adequacy of our financial policies and goals, creating a revenue requirement. And now we're going to talk about moving into the next step, which is the rate-setting process. So this is what I have in my presentation, and maybe we can pause here and see if there are questions or we move on or additional comments from the water commissioners.
Yeah, thank you, Rosemary. And I also want to welcome our water commissioners this evening. They've done a really, really amazing amount of work over the last two years, so I want to recognize you for all your work, especially as we're facing a pretty historic drought. So appreciate all the work and the work of your department, Rosemary. I see that Sierra Ryan has her hand up. Go ahead, Sierra. Press, there you go, you're in. Hi, Sierra.
Hi, thank you for having us today. I just wanted to, speaking for the commission, thank Rosemary for that great presentation. And, you know, just reiterate her statement that this is something that we've been working on for a really long time. I know this was presented to you in April, and at the time, we didn't have the full understanding of what the rate increases would look like, which we do today and which you've already seen. And I want to acknowledge that these are going to be painful, but I also want to acknowledge it's be necessary. The capital improvement program is really well-thought-out. A lot of work has gone into it for many years. These are all projects and programs that are essential to our water supply security and really represent a generational investment in our resiliency. So I don't have anything concrete to add other that answer any questions if you have anything directed towards the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Sierra. I also see Doug Anker is in, has his hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Myers, and thank you, Rosemary, for that presentation. I wanted to comment briefly on an aspect of the process that was relatively novel, but I think useful, and that was the establishment of the ad hoc subcommittee that was referenced in the materials that were shared with you, along with Vice Chair Wadlow and fellow Commissioner Alejandro Paramo. I served on that ad hoc committee. We basically did sensitivity analysis around what is a massive capex budget, looking at various alternative ways to fully structure that in order to maintain our focus on resilience and reliability while trying to balance that with affordability and generational equities. I would just salute staff for coming up with the idea of establishing the subcommittee and working creatively and responsibly with the members of the commission who served on that. The rate structure that you see coming out of this does reflect, I think, good work by that subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other questions from council or commissioners at this time? I had a question about the drought recovery fee. I don't know if it's the right time, Rosemary, but I was just curious. I was thinking about federal and state declarations of drought, and I would imagine we would be able to recoup some of our losses from the system or, you know, accommodate people somehow. How does that play? So if you have an emergency declaration, oftentimes you can get resources to replace loss. And I'm just curious about how that relates to the drought recovery fee.
You know, that's a really great question. I am not aware that there have been FEMA designations for drought, you know, in this sort of classical way, but it certainly is something that we might be getting more into, you know, moving in that kind of direction just because of the extreme weather conditions that we've seen. And that, as you all know, from, you know, the work that we did when we talked with you about drought, the water shortage contingency plan, Santa Cruz's water use is already tremendously efficient. And I think that one of the big challenges we have in sort of moving into drought restrictions is not a very effective way for us to, you know, try to, you can spend a lot of money to try to cut people's dues, but the real solution that we have to get into is some kind of investment in water supply augmentation because it makes it, it's not really feasible for us to curtail demand by 50% as described in, you know, some of those tables, the 50% per month, the monthly numbers are like really eye-popping. And I can't imagine us ever actually implementing those, in part because I think that it's, they're not feasible. We're putting them in because they're sort of required to be a matchup to the five stages that these requires us to have in our plan. But really, anything beyond maybe stage two is not a plan that it seems to me is viable for our community, and we need to be finding a way to make sure that we're not there. And also looking at, you know, ways to mitigate the cost of those investments in water supply, which seems to me that proactive water supply investment is a better way for us to focus solving that problem. There are some good resources coming out of the state this year and also the feds, and we're watching them very carefully and are very heavily engaged in looking at how we can get the water supply reliability we need without necessarily having to deal with droughts in the future and, you know, this kind of curtailment and also getting ourselves a more reliable supply for our community.
Thank you for that answer. Just looking to see if there's any questions from council at this time. Okay, we'll keep moving then, Rosemary.
Okay, so I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and I'm going to invite Sanjay Garg Ellis to present the information. Sanjay is a slug. So he's a local guy who drove metro buses to put himself through, was that your PhD program, Sanjay?
Masters, yeah.
Masters, yes. So he's very familiar and well-loved in Santa Cruz, has been with us for the last couple of cycles of rate studies. So we've been very lucky to have someone who understands our community, and this works so well. So with that, Sanjay, go right ahead.
Thank you, Rosemary. I assume you can hear me well and you can see the screen. And I'm impressed, Rosemary, you remember that I was at UC Santa Cruz for a few years, so thank you for remembering that. Also, I was, I also worked at Natural Bridges too, so I did that for a summer too. So I think I saw someone has a background in Natural Bridges. So we'll get started with the presentation and the agenda. Talk about the rate process, talk about the rate-setting framework developed, proposed rate structure. As Rosemary mentioned, we layered in the financial plan and the proposed rates and then drought rates, next step. There's a lot of information here that we are covering today. This has been a very extensive study, and we actually, the city started in October 3rd with requests for qualification. We got selected on January 14th. We had our kickoff meeting January 10th, pre-COVID, and then we adapted with COVID. We've had several meetings, a lot of meetings with the Water Commission, with customer panels. I feel like we were pretty successful, given the challenges that we faced by doing everything virtually as of today. We met with you also on April 6th to discuss the framework of the rate setting, and then here we are today. So it has been a long journey, a lot of touch points with a lot of different individuals just to make sure we're on the right track in the study. And that's important because this is an important aspect of the community. This is a big study where we did what we call comprehensive cost of service, where we looked at your cost structure, look at your customer profile, and try to marry those two together. We want to do that because that is the foundation to develop a defensible rate structure that's equitable. There are legal constraints with PUP 218. Unfortunately, there are people who are also suing water agencies over this, so we want to have a very strong logic and rationality, want to have a lot of touch points with customers. And we also want to develop what we call administrative record, which is the next step of the study. We did drought rates, we developed system development charges, which we got adopted, as Rosemary mentioned. We did a lot of public outreach. I have Matt Whitner on the call too, if there's any questions about our public outreach strategy. She can talk quite a bit about that. And then the next step is administrative record, which will be a very lengthy document that basically justifies, shows the logic with the rate structures. We suspect some active citizens will want to read that report, which we definitely recommend and encourage, will be available to answer any of their questions, as normal in the process. But it just really shows the map behind all the rate structures and then the five years of rates. Through these, the steps that we conducted, we did a policy objective. We asked ourselves, what do we want to achieve in the rate structure? What are the goals? Which we did. We looked at inside-outside surcharge to make sure whether that makes sense still or not. We'll be talking about that in a second. We talked about, we did a wholesale transfer charge. We looked at elevation surcharge, rate options, infrastructure reinvestment fee options. We also helped step, looking at the data. We've got new data, so it's really nice, so we can do a little bit more refined analysis this time. As I mentioned, system development charge. I'll be presenting two options where no suppose ag with a sense of reliability. We also updated private fire capacity drought rates, and as I mentioned, we did this extensive customer panel to get their input on what makes sense in the community. So from a process perspective, so those are the things we touched on, people we, the touch point, the promo process perspective, there's really four steps. There's a rate setting, there's a cost of service, where we look at allocation of costs, we work with staff and make sure that makes sense. And then we design rates and look at the impact with the Water Commission and what makes sense and what are the values in our community. Then we layer in the financial plan, take that into account, fund the CIP project, which is reliability is the key word there. And then we're basically now at this point where we're looking for your input and another touch point with you to make sure we're good. And if that makes sense, then we would proceed with administrative record, PUP 218 noticing, and then set the public hearing. So the rate-setting framework is basically a three-fold process where we ask ourselves what are the goals and objectives, what do we want to achieve? We also start talking about business case in the sense of administrative costs and equity and what makes sense. And, you know, there might be rate structures out there that are really precise and equitable, but just the business model to do that might be a bit too much, given the limited resources that we have. And then customer impact, we really want to understand what is the impact to customers and which customers are affected mostly by. And so we did that analysis, and we're going to be presenting you that information. We went through a policy exercise with you and with the Water Commission. We presented these results on April 6th where we asked, what are the objectives that we care about? These are the laundry lists. Based on that exercise, we got these three priorities, you know, ensure water for essential use is affordable and accessible, provide sufficient stable revenue to meet operating capital and customer service level needs, and to maintain transparency equitable for water and capital and water reliability needs. And so there is a balancing act here. Sometimes there's a little bit of a conflict, but by achieving one thing, such as affordability essential use, that's by having low fixed charge, high volume metrics, then we accomplish that by, for instance, having, still maintaining the rate stabilization fund or a similar amount of lower water sales to balance out those needs. And of course, staff, you know, is conscious about administrative ease. So based on that information, we go to rate structure. Just to remind ourselves, our current rate structure is you have a fixed and variable component. The fixed is this rate that's deserved based on meter size, larger meter, more capacity, more cost to maintain the meters. You also have a fire line, those are private fires for fire sprinklers. You have a consumption charge, basically residential's four tiers. Everyone else except irrigation is uniformal, I mean, the same rate like gasoline. Irrigation is a three-tiered based on water budget, where it takes into account water size and weather. You have an elevation, surcharge, rate stabilization, and currently do have an inside-outside differentiation of rates. So based on our analysis, based on a lot of workshops, these are our proposals. First is that elimination of the inside-outside rate based on an analysis, it doesn't make sense to do this. It also helps with simplification. Residential tiers, we're recommending that that move from four tiers to three tiers. Again, it simplifies, there's a little bit more simpler story there. Elevation surcharge, that one we are at, suggesting to open that up. Right now, there's only one zone. We're suggesting that three zones because it makes sense for the cap, and there are additional costs in the higher zones. And then we also want to make sure we have a really good logic, rationality for the private fire line. There's been some controversy over that, and so we wanted to just, you know, really make sure we are on some strong ground with our logic and rationality for that. I'm moving relatively quickly here, so if you're saying, please interrupt me. I know there's a lot of information here, and I know you all had a long day, or going to even have a longer day. So the infrastructure charge currently reflects $9 million. We really examined that. I would say this was the meat and potatoes, or maybe I shouldn't, I don't, most of us, I just, maybe the word meat is not the right word, potatoes, where we looked at the different rate structures, whether it's uniform, rate that's deserved, property, you know, how should we fund this? And we went through a lot of exercise, a lot of discussion about this. And based on the pricing objective, based on the values, you know, we really feel comfortable with this tiered and commodified current approach, and that's what we're moving forward with.
Sanjay, I just, I'll interrupt just briefly. I see Councilmember Holder raised her hand. I maybe you Maybe she has a question on those, most recent slides.
I did have a question, but do you really want us to interrupt or should we save the questions for then?
I have no problem.
So I just was confused when you were talking about the private fire lines. Are those the residential, like fires that people get in their homes?
No, it's the, private fire lines are the ones that are commercial, like hospitals, hotels, the mall, those establishments.
And so those, you were saying an increased fee for those?
Some of them may increase, yes.
Okay, that's all I was curious. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the other thing we looked at is North Coast Ag. We wanted to understand their needs and concerns. And based on our experience from the last drought, what we wanted to do is really make sure we address reliability. That's a key concern, especially as we enter this new drought. So what we've done is that we developed two rate structures for them. One is maintain the reliability like anyone else, so they will have curtailment when anyone else has curtailment. And so they'll just be like the typical customer. Another one is a decreased reliability, where it's a seasonal interruption. By having a decreased reliability, they will have a lower rate. So these are two options that North Coast Ag can choose on, decide, excuse me. It's in the Prop 218 notice or the graph that's been developed. And they can decide whether they want to maintain the reliability or have a lower rate and decrease reliability. That's up to them. So based on that, we have these four rate structure components, where we have a fixed charge. What we have right now is customer service, meter maintenance costs. We have a consumption charge that takes into account the different costs of peaking, supply, conservation. We have the infrastructure renewal charge, again, a variable. And then we have the rate stabilization, which is not changing. Based on that information, then we layer in the financial plan. We mentioned, we have the operating, we have the infrastructure charge, we have revenue needs and the percent increase. As you can see, it's quite clear that we're really funding the infrastructure charge. And that's what this is all about, some reliability. So with that, we go into the proposed rates. The first one is that the tiers are changing. As I mentioned earlier, you currently have a four-tiered rate structure. As you note, and these are in units. The units we use is called HCF or CCF. You know, it's sort of a obscure unit that we use in the water industry, 748 gallons is one CCF. What we're suggesting is that, if you notice that some of these are pretty tight here, there's not much of a difference in the unit. So what we're suggesting is go from zero to five, and then to nine, then above that, or above nine. And that, and this is based on average, what you're using, average summary use. So there's a logic and rationality for that. Next, we have a series of tables that shows you the rate schedule for the readiness to surcharge and the commodity, et cetera. And the thought is that this would be the fact, City Council then could, if the public hearing, consider adopting them. And then, you know, you may want to revisit these as you move along, whether you need to implement them or not. So that's a policy decision that you can decide later on. But these are the readiness to serve charge. So there's a lot of numbers here, a lot of information here. Here's the fire charge, as mentioned, so they do go up a little bit more for customers. Again, for larger, the mall, or the hospital, or the hotels are typical. Here's the consumption charges over here. As I mentioned, here's North Coast Ag, where they do have a difference in rate, depending on the reliability. They get to choose that, if they want that or not. The infrastructure charge, we have the zones and the rate stabilization. So there's a lot of information here, right? And so, as you meant, as you might recall in the beginning, I said, well, we want to know, one of the things we want to understand is what's assuming to my customer, what's the impact? So that's what I want to show you now. And then this is really the most important slide, or the first important slide. And the next one might be considered the second most important, where we're showing different usages for residential inside customer. We have two, four, eight, and 12 units. Most customers fall around the eight, around the eight. We have the bill. Right now, we have the proposed bill. We have the dollar and the percent change. As you can see, those who use not that much water will see, you know, less than a $2 increase. Some customers will see a little bit more, around $7. And if you use a lot more, then you'll see a much more substantial increase in your water bill. This takes into account the inside-outside. This takes into account all the changes that I just mentioned. So there's a lot of moving parts here, but this consolidates it all. The second potentially most important slide is, you know, what does this mean compared to our other communities around us? So this is a survey. We're looking at six units. That's like the average usage. What we have here is Watsonville, Marin, of course, Santa Cruz, Scott Valley, Coastside, SoCal Creek, San Lorenzo, and Montero Water. Scott Valley, we're working with right now. They have a public hearing, so they will see an increase shortly. Coastside will also be, we're working with them and they'll see an increase in January. So the, you know, all these agencies are doing some kind of rate setting increase, especially with the drought. They're all facing the same challenges that we are facing. So as you can see from a pecking order, you're still on the lower side compared to neighboring communities. I'm going to stop it here before I go into drought rates. It's almost like a, it is important, it is another aspect, but I don't want to mix the concepts here. Is there any questions before I go into drought rates?
Yeah, Sanjay, I've got two councilmembers, Councilmember Golda and then Councilmember Watkins.
Thank you, Sanjay. You don't happen to have the previous slide projected out to 27?
The, to, the rates to 2027? No, I don't, for the survey or for the customer impact?
The previous slide. I don't remember what the title was.
Yeah, the impact. No, I don't have that. We could provide that to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Watkins and then Councilmember Colton Terry Johnson. Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you for this presentation and for all your work on this. This looks really great. I guess my question sort of is, on the, on a bigger picture perspective, if there is an infrastructure bill passed, what, how is that assumption or potential additional, particularly capital, you know, infrastructure dollars being infused, is that not assumed in this model and we would make adjustments and when that occurs or hopefully that occurs?
I'll answer that one.
Yeah, that's a great question. And so here's the, here's the deal. So we have made certain kinds of assumptions in the financial modeling work, looking at particularly the infrastructure with respect to how much we would likely pay for debt service. And there's a table, I believe, in the Long Range Financial Plan that sort of lays out what the current assumptions are in the model for SRF money, money for market rate debt. And so we've used those assumptions kind of selectively in the analysis we've done. The best outcome that we could get from some of the infrastructure bills is grant money. And one of the really good things that we are right now with our project development is we have a lot of things that are in the category of more shovel-ready than not shovel-ready. So that puts us in a position to compete very effectively. The other thing I will say is that the current SRF state revolving loan fund debt that we have is at 1.4%. So we have about $150 million in spending debt that is at 1.4%. And, you know, if you had a mortgage for your house, which wouldn't be $150 million, but at 1.4%, you would feel extremely lucky that you had that for a 30-year cost of borrowing money. And I think that that, you know, the challenges we're facing is that we have a lot of work to do. We're in a historically sort of low interest rate environment, so it's really opportunity for us to leverage that kind of situation. Even if we have to borrow all of this money, it's way less expensive to do it at 1.4% than at 4% or 5%, which is, in the original work that we did in the 2016 Long Range Financial Plan, I think the debt of service assumption was more like 4% or 5%, which makes a huge difference in what you can afford to do.
Thank you. I have one follow-up question. In terms of being grant-ready, I know we've talked about having the city be grant-ready in a lot of different ways. Assuming that, you know, the water department is poised and has the resources or access to the resources so that when the time comes, that we have kind of ready-to-go grant writers and access to it.
Right. Yes, yes, we do. And we're obviously following the work that just has come out of the state budget recently. There's about $650 million that has come out for drinking water projects in just one category. There's a $400 million in a climate resilient category. And we are working very hard with our local folks to, you know, our representatives in Sacramento to get us the information we need to know when things are coming in terms of notices, funding availability, and also, you know, what projects we might have would line up best for certain kinds of positive money.
Great, great. Thank you. Councilmember Colton Terry Johnson?
Great, yes. Thank you for the presentation. I wonder if we can go to the slide that says 24 on the bottom? Yes, yes, this one. So my question is, do we have this broken down in terms of the percentage increase proposed between customer classes, resident, commercial landscape? It just, as we look at it, it looks like residents are, the increase in residents in the various tiers looks significantly higher than some of the other classes. So I wonder if we have the percentages and if you could just speak to that?
So I have a tape. I don't have it with me at this moment, but we do have a table that shows that your observation is correct, that it does look a bit high here, especially if you look at tier three. Now, one thing to note is that there's not that many customers in these higher tiers. So it doesn't affect residential as much. Where there are, the biggest shift though is actually in landscape accounts. And that's what we wrestled with throughout the study is how do we deal with that? Because one of the challenges is that when we do our allocation of costs, we look at peaking, how much people use water relative to the summer, relative to the winter. And landscape accounts use a lot more water in the summer relative to the winter, so they are peaking more. And so more of the cost is shifted over to them. And so landscape accounts do see more of an increase than other customers.
Sanjay, I think I would add a couple of comments to this. The cost allocation is not a, you know, take 2,700 or 27,000 customers and divide equally. It's based on how various customer classes use the system. About 2% total consumption is in the residential class. And residential class, although they don't peak as much as the landscape irrigation, they do peak. And commercial class, generally, the commercial properties that we have in our service area that use landscape, use water for irrigation, have a separate irrigation meter. So their consumption for that is in the irrigation category. They're much more sort of flat in a sort of a general way. They're not peaking off the system in that, in that sort of same way that, you know, somebody who's using, you know, three CCF in the wintertime might be using six CCF in the summertime based on their irrigation practices. So partly what you're seeing here is the effect of allocating costs from the, based on how different customer classes use the system. And Prop 218 requires that customers be charged only the amount that is reflected in, you know, meeting that actually providing the service to them. So you do see these kinds of differentials.
Thank you for explaining that. Sanjay, you're muted. I have Councilmember Cummings and then Councilmember Brown.
I had, one of my questions was answered because members of the public were kind of asking those questions of why now to try to, you know, get these loans. And it makes a lot of sense that, you know, if there's an opportunity to get this funding at a very low interest rate, that we want to try to really do that, you know, rather than wait and then, you know, have a higher rate at a later point in time. The one question, one of the questions I had, if we could go back or maybe forward to the slide, just for clarification, when it was showing the HCF rates for the different, not that one, it was graph, yes. So based on this graph, and for clarification, this is, this fiscal year 2022 bill, that reflects the bill for those types of residencies for the entire year. So based on the scrap, those people would pay $32.46 at that resident for their water that year. And then it would go up to 33, maybe 60.
These are monthly charges.
Okay.
And the, it's an example of somebody who's using two CCF, that's what their monthly bill would be. And you can see that it goes, again, the, one of your priority water pricing objectives was the sort of maintaining equitable, sorry, affordable access for essential use, which wintertime consumptions and these lower, you know, numbers that definitely represent. And so the structure of the rate structure of maintaining so much of the revenue recovery from the volume-based rate is the way that that is accomplished very specifically.
Got it. Okay. That was, thanks for the clarification because I wasn't sure if that was annual or monthly bills.
For some other lifetime, that might have been annual, but not this lifetime, unfortunately.
I know, I was going to say that's pretty low, but, great. And then the other question I had was, remember the public had asked, you know, why, in terms of the timeline for paying back this loan, like it seems like this is a five-year structure. And people were wondering, you know, why can't it be stretched out to like a seven-year structure or longer to kind of ease that increase in those bills over time?
Yeah, you will, you will recognize from the document that there's an appendix in the Long Range Financial Plan that has a 15 capital program. And this one has a pretty good-sized chunk of money in it. And I think that next 10 years is sort of a little bit more sort of stretched out spending, but it doesn't go to zero. So there's more money to be spent after this. And you'll recall from the, maybe you'll recall from the April 6th conversation that we, there were several scenarios that were done, high, medium, and low. They were originally laid out over a 10-year period. And where we got from the sort of highest one to the one that's in here is we spread it out over 15 years. So we've done that to the degree that we can. There is a, there is a challenge with the kind of some of these big projects and spending associated with these big projects. You stretch it out too much longer than, you know, we've sort of done in our plan. You end up with a higher cost because, you know, you don't, you're not getting the project done. And I think that, you know, we are looking at an ongoing inflation of construction costs, which is a challenge. So, you know, trying to figure out how to get this work done in this environment. And this is a, the stuff that's in this five years is pretty, you know, there's a few really big things and then there's some smaller things. But the big things don't, they don't lend themselves to being stretched out really, really long time.
Thanks. And then so for the individual residents that are paying their rates back, the reason why it's that five-year kind of increase is because we really need to make sure that we're able to pay back in a timely manner so that we're not falling behind.
Yeah, yeah. And I guess the other thing is that the maximum number of years that Prop 218 will let you do a rate increase, a sort of a year-over-year is five. So we couldn't do seven if we wanted to. And I think that that's a, you know, that's a challenge, obviously. You can do less than five, and, but you can't do more than five.
That's, that's what I was trying to get to. So that's really helpful. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. I've got Councilmember Brown and then Councilmember Golda.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to our interim city manager slash water director, wearing your water director hat. I really appreciate.
I have, I really appreciate, again, I mean, I can't say it enough, how, how much work goes into this and, you know, how well clearly explained it is, and yet I still find myself with questions. So one of the questions that came up for me in conversation was related to the, the commercial class and why no tiering in, in that category? Given that there are significant differences beyond seasonal among, you know, commercial users. So like hotels, for example, may use a lot more water than, you know, another business function that, you know, clothing stores or, you know, whatever's left of those, those other businesses in our, in our community. So I'm just wondering, is there, based, does that's just based on the research? I think some of the answer is kind of implicit. I'm starting to feel like I understand it maybe, but I'd love to just hear a little more of the thinking on that in your model.
Yeah, um, so, um, yeah, so that's a great question. A lot of agencies that would love to be able to tiered commercial accounts. The challenge is that you actually hit it on the nail is that there's so many different types of commercial accounts. You know, you have hotels, even within the, there's so many different hotels in your service area. You have some larger ones and then you have some smaller boutique ones. And, and then what makes sense, how would you tailor it? Anything we do to do a tiered rate for commercial would have quite a bit of administrative burden. Because you'd want to make sure that it's really designed to create incentives, reduce water, not necessarily overcharge customers just because they have a large establishment and they're very successful. And so that's sort of the, that's the hard part. And so we did look at some ideas behind that. But again, based on the pricing objectives, based on administrative ease, it didn't really make sense to do that.
So I think one other thing that needs to be commented on there, that tiers have to be justified based on the cost of service. So that's, it's a, that's a really, it's sort of, that sounds like a bunch of words that, oh, that's obvious. But the, the details of how you justify that it costs you more to provide, you know, 100 gallons to this person versus 300 gallons to that person, especially when it's, you know, the, the pattern exists. It's different from the residential class where you see that, you know, the sort of breaking into those kind of tiers. But, but tiers are historically a vulnerability. And so when you set them, you really have to be able to justify based on the, the cost of service analysis that you can, that they're justifiable based on actual analysis of cost of service.
Oh, we have Prop 218 to thank for.
Yes, we do.
That as well. Okay. Thank you. That's really helpful.
Uh, thank you, council member. I've got council member Golda next.
Thank you. I have two quick questions. Has there ever been any discussion about creating like a similar structure like PG&E has? Customers can choose to, to have your bill kind of balanced out, like they average out your last year's bill and then you can pay like a, a flat rate kind of for that year so you can budget?
We haven't done that. And, and I think that part of the problem is that we haven't had the sort of billing system infrastructure to do it. So that's a bit of a challenge. It is among the various things that we can be, that undoubtedly we'll be looking at over time as we go forward just because, you know, more customers need that kind of assistance or it's a, it's a simpler way to make sure people can continue to, you know, get their bills paid and be able to afford them. It is one of the things along with, you know, continuing to advocate for state and federal funding for low-income ratepayer systems and different kinds of ways that we're working on to help mitigate some of the impacts of, you know, the rate increases to those least able to pay.
And then my, my only other question was regarding the, the talk we had several months ago about the possibility of adding the cost of the capital improvement property tax bill. Was there a reason why that was?
So it turned out that, that when the customer panels that we did, that wasn't a very desired. There was a kind of sense of, you know, hiding the ball and, and the confusion associated with that. I think it is a feasible thing, but it, it turned out that, that it really wasn't a desired approach.
Well, thank you. I think that is all of our current questions right now.
Okay, so now I'll go to the next part, which is drought rates. And so drought rates are a surcharge tied to a specific drought defined by the Water Storage Contingency Plan. It's designed to recover the lost revenue due usage. And it is proposed right now, and if you currently have one. But our, the, the proposal is to maintain that to do it based on a fixed charge based on meter size. This is a surcharge, it's temporary. So in the ideal world, we're not in a drought condition, so you wouldn't even, we wouldn't even be talking about this. But when a drought occurs, you would have this. Where, where the recommendation is to use the same methodology that was proposed, that was developed in 2016. When a drought declared to the council, the water department will implement corresponding rates, these drought surcharges, and then we collect it over a 12-month period. So what we did is, is we looked at your, your plan for a drought, and these are the different stages associated with them. It gets scary very quickly, I'll be the first to admit that, especially we get into these higher stages. I know Rosemary has been very, you know, her goal is never to get past stage two and just to stay at stage two at, at the most. But, you know, these are, the reason why you have these are, these are additional tools in case. Hopefully, we never go there, but if something happens, I, I, I don't know what needs to happen for us to be in stage four and five, but hopefully it never happens. But if it happens, we're really rationing water because of an earthquake or significant fire or whatever that scenario is, we have this tool in our tool belt. It's also important to note when I show you the rates is that these are the maximum that you can implement. You don't have to necessarily implement the full amount. So that's something that a city council, again, can consider as you go through this process. But you want to have them adopted so you have that flexibility because of Prop 218. So as mentioned, it would be based on meter size. One of the challenges that we face is this reduction in lost revenue as the stages occur and the unit rate increases based on meter size. And that's just the nature of your system because people don't use that much water. But it's sort of a blessing. You don't use much water, so you're very good at the water stewardship, making sure water is available for the future. But because you use a little bit of water, when we ask you to cut back, it has even more of a financial challenge to the agency. These are the rates by stages, and this is a fixed charge, a monthly charge. As I mentioned, again, the office here is, is that if city council adopts them, then when a stage occurs, you could consider whether you want to implement that corresponding stage or implement something lower. It creates flexibility. You could ask, there are other options such as potentially shifting CIP projects out, which is not favorable, but could be done, or using reserves. Again, all of these are not necessarily great, but it creates another tool in the tool belt in this dire situation. The drought rates would be subject to the revenue adjustments that declared. So it is a little bit of a complex tables because it's going to be five stages for each year. So it is a lot of information that we'll be showing you. I'm just going to show you the five-year schedule for only stage two, which is the, which is the top office, that we only stay at stage two or lower. We never go above that. So here's associated drought stages with the revenue increases that's needed now here to fund the CIP. So again, just the most important thing is what does this mean to my customers? How does this affect my customers? So we have a 5/8 inch meter here. We have someone who uses six units based on the proposed rate structure. They want to pay $75.31 with a stage two 20% reduction. That person does that. They follow that reduction. There is now a drought surcharge here of $21.05. The bill goes up to $80.15. So they do see a slight increase in their bill, less than $5. But we still have water reliable for them. If that individual does not cut back and continues using the six units, as you'll note, that what will happen is that they will also have a penalty rate on top of that, too. That will be charged on top of their normal rate. That'll be on top of that. Is there any question about the drought surcharges?
I just have a comment more than anything else. I mean, I think this is what kind of, you know, as a, as a water, you know, customer, this is the most non-intuitive, you know, counterintuitive part, you know, which is most people would want to assume their chart, you know, their, you know, their bill goes down because they're saving water, right? And it's really hard to explain that the unit of water still costs the same. And even though you're losing yet less, you know, it's still costing the same to get that water to you. And so I'm just curious, Rosemary, how do you, you know, is there also, you know, communications, kind of planning around this and other things? Because I mean, I'm, I'm sure these are the calls you got, you know, in 2014 through 2016. And, and again, I don't, you know, it's sort of, why do it if we don't get some kind of financial reward? So I, I think a big, this is a big hill. This, to me, is one of the biggest hills to climb, you know, in terms of the rate stuff. Just curious about how you handle the sort of communications.
The, the main thing that we talk to people about is the fact that we have a really big mismatch for reasons that we've talked about of how we collect revenue versus the like. And about 92% of the water department's costs are fixed as opposed to variable. But about 90% of our rate revenue is variable as opposed to fixed. So when we, people use less water, we don't save very much money on chemicals and power, which is a major variable cost in the production. And we still have to deliver the water that they are using. So it really is unfortunate reality of taking fewer units and trying to collect the same amount of money, which means the price per unit has to go up. And it is terribly counterintuitive. And it's not, and this is not a, this drought cost recovery fee, a strategy that I think is totally wonderful and we should use it all the time. And in fact, the times between, we did declare a drought in, a stage one drought in 2018 and also obviously this year, we didn't impose the drought cost recovery D and D in those cases and are kind of using the rate stabilization reserve to, you know, sort of more strategically deal with that. But if we got into a situation further down the scale, some of the revenue impacts of a 30% cut and not very much water use, it, there's, there's not a way for us to make up some of those gaps without doing something here. That's why this is in the market basket. And it's also why, from my perspective, the, the goal isn't to ever do this again, get water supply reliability such that, you know, our customers have an adequate supply. They're not excessive users. They wouldn't, I wouldn't expect those use patterns to change. But that's what we, that's where I think we need to put our money and put our customers' money in producing that outcome.
I have any other council member hands up, so I'll go ahead. Oh, sorry.
I had one quick question. So I guess under what scenario would we see this going to affect? Given that you just mentioned that, you know, we declared a drought and it hasn't gone into effect this year? Because I, I know I've been approached about this issue already, earlier this summer when we first declared the drought. So I'd guess, you know, for us, it'd be really helpful to kind of be able to share with community members, you know, cure the circumstances that occur so that they don't, just because we declare a drought, that this is going to happen.
So, so the drought, the Water Storage Contingency Plan contains language and we're pretty sure it's in the Munich Code that basically authorizes the, the city to impose the drought cost recovery fee linked to a specific stage when the council takes action to, to author, to state, you know, to establish a stage of the emergency, so stage one or stage two. It doesn't require that we do it. It, it authorizes that to happen. And when we've been in stage one either this year or in 2018, it just felt to me like it wasn't something that was worth the headache, so to speak, associated with it, so we didn't do it. But if we have another dry winter and we go into next year in a similar kind of situation that we are this year, we are in the process of looking about, you know, and I shared some stuff with you and, I don't know, a few weeks ago, when you came back from break about, you know, kind of what the, some of the forecast looks like for next winter if we have another dry winter. We are looking at, we, it's two. And one of the things we would have to look at if that were the case is what is the fiscal impact on the revenue side of doing that? And we would bring you a very specific, you know, recommendation related to implementing this in the, in that event.
Right. And then the council would have to decide on that. We'd have to provide authorization and approve.
Yes, it's part of the resolution that, that, that we ask you to approve when we go into a particular stage of the Water Storage Contingency Plan.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Sanjay.
Righty.
I'm not seeing any other council members or commissioners, so please.
Okay, so next step is to receive direction from city council. Prepare the administrative report, as I mentioned, which is a lengthy document. Important dates are, of course, today, the virtual public meetings that will be happening on November 10. We would like to set the public for November 23. If city council adopts it, then it would be effective July 1. We would need to start sending out the Prop 218 notice. That needs to be sent out at least 45 days before the public hearing. Basically, the way it works is that if someone wants to protest, they, that they can do a written protest. That's one for a pro. So it must be received before the end of the public hearing.
Great.
So with that, you know, we're ready to either have you take public comment or take your further questions or entertain a, you know, the council can entertain an action.
Okay. Thank you, Rosemary and Sanjay. Lot of work, lot of work and thing, which is our water system. I had one question, one last question was the value, value, valuation of our system was pretty, was a big number, about $900 million. So.
Right.
We were thinking about what this means kind of in the, in the realm of things. That valuation, how you come about that? And, and is that having that asset and those assets sort of described in a sense for our borrowing and, and other needs?
So the valuation has to do with the replacement, this is calculated based on replacement costs. And so we took the assets that we have. We understand kind of, we made an estimate about what their replacement costs were. We kind of know how long they've been in the system and so, you know, what the, what the depreciation rate is. The way that the valuation is mainly used is in setting system development charges. But it's, it's the valuation minus the capital program because the idea is that the, the people are buying into the existing system infrastructure. And then for current and future ratepayers will pay for the capital program. So, Sanjay, I don't know if you want to add anything else to that number, but it is a big number. It's a, you know, nearly, well, nearly a billion dollars. It's a very valuable asset for our community and really underpins so much economic and, you know, vitality and viability and sustainability for our community. And it obviously means cost that in, in, still, the Red Mill Water Treatment Plant, which has this really horrific, you know, re-figure in the hundreds of millions kind of number associated with the work that needs to be done there, was completed for 1.6 million, but it was 1960. Sanjay, do you want to add anything on valuation?
I mean, the main thing to me is, in this process, it's, it's all about maintaining that value. Some sense, the city, your, your job is to maintain this asset for future generation, for current generation and future generation. And that's what we're doing through this process. It's just to make sure that we maintain this value. Because if we diminish the value, then it, we call it mining assets. We're not making sure that it's viable for the future. So it is expensive project, expensive system, and that's normal. And, and, you know, and you're doing a great job in having a plan to maintain it. And, and, you know, and you're doing a great job in having a plan to maintain it.
You, Sanjay? Is there any other questions from council members before I take this out to the public? Not seeing any hands, so. Well, thank you, Sanjay, for joining us this evening. Hopefully we have further questions as we go into deliberation. Excuse me. I'll go ahead and take this out to the public. And I see, so we are on item number, look. We are on item number four. For those who may be joining us right now, and this is our water, uh, our water rates, water department long-range financial plan and water rate schedule. And I see one person has their hand up in the audience. It shows as MP. If you would press star six to unmute yourself, please go ahead. Star six, you should be able to get.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, please.
Yes, I'm just curious, with interest rates so low and the, the junk bond market what it is, and just debt markets what it is, have we ever considered just borrowing at 50% more than what we need right now? Because we probably won't get this opportunity to get such cheap money in the future.
Usually we won't have comments with, with questions with answers, but our staff will definitely take note of that. And we will, I'll look to them if they do want to answer that before we take any action.
I, I will actually say something about that. If you borrow money in the, sort of, just the, sort of, standard debt market, typically it's a three-year, you need to borrow, spend what you're going to borrow in within a three-year period. So it is, it's not, you can't, you cannot, from a financial management and securities management perspective, you can't do what is being suggested here, although I'm sure a lot of people have thought would be a good idea.
Thank you for clarifying that. Are there any other folks in the audience tonight who wish to speak to this item? And that's their hands, so I'll bring this back to council for further deliberation. And look for either a motion tonight or further deliberation on this item. Councilmember Brown and then councilmember Calentari Johnson.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to say thank you again to our water department team and Sanjay for you for being here, really helping us move through this. I just wanted to say, you know, I, I think that Chair, the Water Commission Chair, Ryan, comment that these are painful rate increases, but necessary, really sums it up. And, you know, I, it's, I hope that we can really invest some energy and time, and I know the water department is doing this, into finding ways to on low-income residents and fixed-income residents, and especially I've heard from people just talking, like, with my neighbors and, and others about the, you know, seemingly small increases for low-water users is a significant hit for some, much more than others. And we can't do anything about that with our fee structure because of Prop 218. Another reason to thank Prop 218. You know, that, that, we do take that seriously and that we just continue to, you know, do everything in our power to find resources to perhaps mitigate some of those cost increases for people with the least ability to pay. Separate conversation for another time. But with that, I would be happy to move the staff recommendation.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Colm?
Thank you, yes, I was also going to thank Rosemary and the team and Sanjay and the Water Commission for all your work. And I was gonna also move the motion to all second, thank you.
Great.
And I'll second the thank you to the Water Commission as well. A lot of work has been put in, and I, and I really appreciate everything you all do.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to move the staff recommendation with a second. And it looks like we don't have any other additional comments or deliberation from council members. So I think we are ready for a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Watkins?
Hi, and also thanks to Water Commission and for Water Department as well.
Calentari Johnson?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Coming?
Hi, and for the record, I just want to express my appreciation for all the work that's gone into this. And also just, you know, for, for our community to understand that, you know, we really need to invest in our infrastructure now, because it's going to cost a lot more if we delay. And we really need to make sure that, of, of all the resources we provide our citizens, that water is, is one of those that we're able to make sure everybody has.
Golda?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Brunner?
Hi.
And Mayor Myers?
I'm I, and I'll also just briefly comment that I think Sanjay really wrapped this up, that we read so often about communities who haven't taken care of their most important resource, which is their water. And we hear stories, you know, all over the country and the world. And so this is an investment in the future and, you know, we're, we're paying it forward. And I certainly echo councilmember Brown's concerns. And I know we were able to provide a lot of relief for, and so I want to, you know, make sure that our department really continues that value of really working with people who are struggling and may not be able to bake those bills at any given time. So I think having our forgiveness program and, you know, helping to leverage those drought, you know, those other funds that help pay ourselves back is, is really wise. And so I appreciate the structure that you've put together for the, for the long-range financial plan. So, thank you, and with that, I'm an I as well. Okay, so we are finished with that item. I will then open up item number five tonight. And this will be an ordinance amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic Chapter 10.04 Definitions and Chapter 10.40 Stopping, Standing, and Parking, and Chapter 10.41 Citywide Parking Permit pertaining to the Parking of Oversized Vehicles, and Chapter 16.19 Stormwater and Urban Water Runoff Pollution Control at Section 16.19.070 Discharge of Sewerage Prohibitive. And I just want to note a couple of limitations tonight, and I will open this up for my colleagues to introduce. Tonight, we, we will have extra speaking time that was granted to three groups. Those will be asked to use that, use two minutes for their extra. And Bonnie, I believe you've got the list, but I want to confirm, and we'll go in this order. Westside Cares, correct Bonnie?
Right.
So Westside Cares, you'll go first, Westside Neighbors is second. And then, remind me of the last one, Bonnie.
It's Stepping Up Santa Cruz.
Santa Cruz, exactly. So we'll go in that order when we do take the extra time, folks, and that will be the start of public comment. And then we will allow for 90 minutes of comments, and we're asking each speaker to have, to keep their comments to a minute. And of course, we'll have several hearings on this item, so those, those, we're just requesting those things for this evening. I will go ahead, and from what I understand, I believe my colleagues, either councilmember, the councilmembers who sponsored this are going to open this up. And I'm not sure who's going to go first, so I'll look to you guys to wave your hand or can open this item up. Is that you, Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor, yeah, I'm happy to open this up, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
So, um, this item is stemming from a previous council direction in June related to safe sleeping sites and the direction of, or safe parking, identifying safe parking locations and to look at the previous 2015 ordinance. So this item has been built upon that. And the three councilmembers that we've worked on this with staff, we'd like to introduce it tonight for public comments and bring it back for our first reading at our next, uh, in October at a regular meeting. And I believe we can look at the, the agenda calendar to set that first reading in October. So tonight, it's really an opportunity to get full public outreach for this item, to introduce it. We've already received a lot of very specific comments on the, uh, the ordinance amendments and some suggested changes and edits to the amended content of the ordinance. And so we really want to make sure that, you know, we develop, um, a good balance of all of that feedback and allow that time before we bring it back for the first reading. So I, I'll pass it on to councilmember Golda and councilmember Calentari Johnson.
Thank you, I think I'm next. So for me, this is something that I've been looking at since 2013, when I was appointed by the city council at the time to participate in a public safety task force. And there was 14 residents from diverse and varied backgrounds. And we spent the better part of the year being tasked with exploring, like, deep-rooted issues affecting public safety, including but not limited to drug abuse and treatment, drug-related crimes, homelessness, mental health, gang activity, and the increase in calls for service, and what that does to our criminal justice system and just the complexity around those issues. And because we were such a diverse group of residents, it really required a lot of thought and analysis, and most importantly, open minds. And there was tons of, you know, discussion and disagreements and collaboration. And at the end of it, after hearing from judges, lawyers, police, outreach workers, service workers, addicts, people in recovery, we brought forward 56 recommendations. And number 35 was for the city to review and implement strict parking and overnight camping ordinance related to RVs on city streets, increment of municipal code violations related to RV parking in the city of Santa Cruz. And then, having lived on the Lower West Side for the last 16 years, you know, I see a lot of the impacts on a daily basis. And my sister and her kids just live on Delaware. And so, which is, you'll see in the presentation why that's significant. And so through this ordinance, we're attempting to address some of the behaviors associated with RVs camping on city streets, knowledge, like, it's not perfect. We think that through modifications, we'll be able to address some of the issues, such as fires, oil and black water spills that directly, you know, leak into our watershed and into the Monterey Bay. There's litter, violence, drug use, in fact. In addition, and most importantly, also, it gives people living in RVs more opportunity to increase services with the implementation of safe sleeping sites that haven't been there in the past. And hopefully, you know, more stability and help improve their lives as well. So we're really trying to make this a win-win for everybody in the community, but we acknowledge that we're, we're, we want more input at this point. And so that's where we are tonight. I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague, Calentari Johnson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Brunner and councilmember Golda provided a pretty good description. I think, you know, what I would add is, I'll pick up where councilmember Golda kind of just left off, is that, that we want to use this as an opportunity to expand the program we have in place with the city-sponsored safe parking program. We have been in conversation with service providers in the faith community to look at cost sharing and, and supporting the programs that are in place to expand those. We've also been talking to county partners on identifying sites in unincorporated areas. So we're using this opportunity to address, as, as councilmember Golda just outlined, some of the impacts of oversized vehicles parked on city streets. And, and there'll be some more details in the presentation that Chief Mills will provide momentarily. So we're using this opportunity to revise the ordinance and address these very egregious impacts, impacts on how those individuals were using their vehicles as, as a place to live. They are also living in conditions of, of trash and human waste around them. So, um, looking at the, the successes that we've had already with the safe parking programs, expanding that and addressing the negative impacts of these on our city streets. I think, I think the other really important piece that councilmember Golda touched on is every opportunity that we get, we should use to connect folks, folks to a pathway to housing. Housing is ultimately the goal that we want to be reaching for, and housing can be attainable. So, so that, that is something that we're looking at. And what we've proposed tonight is that we form an ad hoc committee appointed by the mayor that will dive deeper into this. We've been working on it for several months, councilmember Golda for several years. But we really take the time to dive deeper into this, to form a, a response and a program that, that is responsive to the needs of everyone in our community. So I think with that, I, or to Vice Mayor Brunner, who will get us set up for the presentation.
Thank you, uh, member Calentari Johnson. I will hand it over to Chief Mills if, if you, yes, there you are, thank you. Welcome.
Oh, good evening, Mayor Myers and City Council, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this information to you, to make sure that we're all on the same page and that we, as said by several of our councilmembers, give the opportunity for the community to have a robust opportunity to weigh in. And so I think what you're going to find in this presentation is that opportunity for people to adjust what is already there will be present. And, and that way, we can move forward with the, with the assurance that everybody's had that, that opportunity. So I'm going to try to share my screen right now.
Not there yet, Andy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not finding it, out of my three dots up top, hang on.
Okay, no worries.
Do you want me to share it too?
I was just looking in the wrong spot, not surprised. Can you see it now?
Yes, we can.
Great. So to begin with, we really wanted to make sure that, give you an idea of what's going to take place in the next few minutes. This is an introduction to the oversized parking ordinance, vehicle ordinance. So that is not, we're not asking for the first reading, it's just to give the information. We want to examine also the scope of the problem and the past efforts that have taken place in the city as councilmember Golda had discussed a few seconds ago. And then present the proposed ordinance and amendments. And Director Butler will take care of that portion, since he has really invested a great deal of time, effort, and energy into language along with the city attorney. And then we'll also discuss the formulation of an ad hoc subcommittee on the safe parking program. Again, the purpose of the presentation is to define the problems associated with oversized vehicle parking. And I think that there's a great deal of frustration in our city amongst many in some of the community looking at the problem. We want to introduce you to the ordinance language, provide time to examine and think about, think through the ordinance, ensure the opportunity to give council and staff feedback so we can make adjustments if appropriate. But also, I think, very important to build the most fair, consistent, and sound ordinance possible. And I really want to give a lot of credit to our city attorney, Tony Candati, and we're really putting a lot of time, effort, and energy in this to make sure that. really putting a lot of time, effort and energy in this to make sure that, you know, looking at case law and making sure that we are as constitutionally sound as possible. One of our lieutenants just retired early, Arnold Vasquez, it's his picture on the, on the screen there. Arnold's an interesting guy, he was a fabulous leader in our department, but something he said to me the last day of employment struck me pretty profoundly. Arnold joined the police department in the nineties, late nineties, and his very first call, the very first day, the very first hour of policing in our city was to handle oversized parking on Delaware and Natural Bridges. And he, and he, you know, told us, literally nothing has changed in 20 years. And that is why I think this makes a lot of sense to me, that we shouldn't have a generation of police officers retire from the city and not having had a substantial impact on the problem. In fact, there are probably those who would say it's gotten worse. We can look at data around that, but it's still something that has gone a long period of time. We have received thousands of emails over even just my time, short time here, for a little bit over four years, from community members regarding the problems out there. 400 plus from just the West Side residents regarding not allowing people to park out there in a structured, in a, so this is acutely, an acute problem for many people. We've also had multiple meetings, both small and large, both council and staff. I've been with, met many of these meetings with some of our council members, you know, Mayor Myers and I also went out there a couple of different times. And many people were just frustrated over the parking and some of the, there's been decades of input from the community. So this is not new to virtually anybody in the city. And then, and, and we also want to recognize that some council members and some community members have been actively involved in drafting and promulgating this ordinance. And so we really want to recognize the efforts of many community members to have an input on this and to help lead us to a possible solution or partial solution to some of the problems. So what's the goal? To me, and this is just me speaking, the goal of the ordinance is balance. And I think that whatever we do in the city, Santa Cruz has the reputation of trying to be as balanced as possible in how we promulgate policy as well as how we lead and enforce the law. We are mixing service options with enforcement capability. We can't have just one or the other. And I think that we all know that. So this ordinance seeks to balance compassion and accountability by referring people to services, giving them the opportunity to park in a safe place, you know, with a structured environment, but at the same time, recognize that if they continue to, there's a consequence for that. And, and that the police department as well as the parking department should be and are fully prepared to hold people accountable and leverage the law as best we can to hold people accountable. So how big's the problem? What's the goal? There were 15 9/11 calls so far this year, not including 9/11 wireless calls, related to oversized vehicles. Seven were for fires, three were oversized vehicle fires. That's not just in the West Side, that's citywide and may or may not result directly to illegally parked vehicles. Fire responded to 38 vehicle fires in 2020 and 2021. Of those, three were oversized vehicles. Public Works responds quite often. They responded to 12 oversized vehicles, service calls, 14 public right of way calls and scores of other cleanups and trash pickups that are referred to them by police and fire. I just really want to give recognition to Public Works because we literally, in parks as well, we literally call them almost every week while we're cleaning parch encampments. And they respond and they do a fabulous job as part of the team to, to help clean up some of these problems in the city. So we really want to give some credit. So unmanaged parking and camping can lead to significant environmental concerns. This is our recent photo of trash on the sidewalks, as well as you can see buckets that are often contain urine and feces that get dumped into our drains which leads into our bay. And it can be a significant problem, not only here but in some of the other unmanaged camps as well. It also is a significant lack of access to coastal parking. People will park for long periods of time in some of these places, and I'll go into that in a little bit. We also do see criminal activity. In the last five years, there are 96 Part I crimes placed at Delaware Natural Bridges, Swanton and, and Shaffer Road. So that's a pretty high concentration. A lot of those were assaults between people living there as well as auto theft recoveries. So this is data that was gathered by the West Side community neighbors who put in a Verizon six camera on a, on a light pole over by Cowles Beach. Yeah, I just want to go through some of the data and highlight it for you. 95% of all people park for two hours or less. However, 6% consume parking at a much higher rate than everybody else. So 6% of all parking events consume 31% of parking out on Cowles Beach. That denies access to a whole lot of people. And, and so when you take a look at the bigger picture, and this is typical of, you know, both employees as well as crime, a small amount of people really consume the efforts of the majority of, of our services. And you're looking at total minutes, there's over a million minutes of, of parking spaces that were blocked in our city. Oversized vehicle parking issue in some more context, in 20 and 21, five streets, Delaware Natural Bridges, Shaffer Mission and Alamar was 33% of the problem. And if you look at it, about 80 vehicles out of all the vehicles that were ticketed and tagged, in a, ticketed and tagged, I'm trying to move this around, apologize, had three or more 72-hour violation. So it's, again, it's a small number of people who are creating the biggest part of the problem. And that's what we seek to, to deal with here. I found this interesting, this is what's called the trouble index. So the trouble index looks at 911 calls per 1,000 parking events. He's at the time of day, and this is military time on the bottom of the, of the chart here. So from nine o'clock at night till four in the morning, you can see the spike in 911 calls of, of parking spaces that are consumed. So theoretically, if we can control that, obviously you, you could affect the amount of calls to 911 which are crimes that are taking place. From the police perspective, in 2020, the SCPD did 2,200 abatement calls for service and want to give a lot of credit to Joe Hady and some of our volunteers who go out there on a regular basis and, and handle those abatement calls by tagging vehicles. And of the 197 that were oversized vehicles that were tagged, we towed 20 of those vehicles. In 2021, so far, we've done 2,400 calls for abatement services, 294 were oversized vehicles and 12 so far have been tagged. It might be a little bit higher after the operation, a couple. That's the amount of work that our folks are doing out there on a regular basis. So where's the problem? 33% of all of our activity is on the Far West Side. If you look at the concentrations, the heat map, it's mostly centered on Delaware, Natural Bridges and then Shaffer Road. And so that's where most of the abatement activity takes place. Now that might be a little skewed from the standpoint, but we base that on calls for service from community members when we go out there to do those abatements. So what are the barriers to effective management of this, of this problem? The toss, the cost of precious metals has dropped significantly in, in the recent years. So therefore, it's no longer as profitable for the, for some of the dismantlers, because most of these wind up being dismantled and, and turned into precious metal scrap. The tow yards literally have no room for these vehicles. Each of these bigger vehicles can take up to two hours to load and tow. So it's incredible amount of effort on the part of the tow truck drivers as well as the police. As you can see, this isn't just your little tow truck, this is a pretty good sized tow truck that takes us a great deal of specialization to be able to do this in an effective way. The last time we did it, Public Works came out and immediately sucked out all of the black water out of the, out of things so we weren't leaking it on the way up to the tow yard. The tow yards have no more room for the motorhomes and buses because they've just run out of room. So last year, we created our own tow yard. That's why you saw it dip in the numbers because there was no place to have these vehicles towed to. So we got creative as a team and created our own tow yard and have had the vehicles towed and stored up there until scrap metallers can get in there and after proper notifications and dismantle those. The problem is, it proves disruptive to Public Works operations. And so we've literally run out of space. We're over capacity and there's no more room to tow these vehicles. And so this becomes a difficult problem to, to manage. The cost of, of towing these vehicles is not budgeted. As you can see, just the towing itself is about $1,200, between $900 and $1,200 per vehicle, and that does not include the, the scrapping of the metal and having those things torn apart, nor the emptying of the antsbreeze, the abrasions, the black water and all the other things that come with it. And each of those sometimes take different people to get up there and do that. So it can be pretty expensive per vehicle. Again, we just don't, that has not been figured into our budget at this point. So what are the resources? The resources available are 15 operational spaces in the city and 21 outside the city and the county. 13 of those are on religious sites and two on city property. The police department's front lot has been used sporadically by the AFC to house individuals. We had a father and two daughters living on our front lot for a considerable period of time. And, and we were proud to be able to, to use, utilize the lot. And here's the process we used. We informed neighbors that this was going to take place. We defined the duration of the pilot project for them. We talked to those in the program to make sure that they were ready and willing to behave as good neighbors. And then we monitored the progress and to make, taking place. And then we assessed appropriateness of continuing this program. So the result was we had zero calls for service, problems, issues with those parking. And we also know that they can also park on private business property as well as private residential property when appropriate. This has been addressed before as was stated earlier. Public Citizens Task Force in 2013, that led to the recommendations of a parking ordinance in 2015, which council adopted in 2016. The Zonia Minister approved coastal development permit to, to implement the ordinance. Coastal Commission filed appeal on the ordinance in 2016 and is there today. So how does this fit into health and all policies? You know, that's important to us as, as council has adopted this health and all policies approached. And oversized vehicle ordinance will help control the flow of untreated urine, feces and other chemicals into public space. And it could also help us reduce trash and litter as well as some crime issues. Equity is important to each of us and the ordinance will be challenging for some of our community members. You know, we're pretty direct about that. Although we know the council will hopefully direct us to work with council and ad hoc committee to establish safe sleeping sites, which will actually, for those who comply with the rules and the regulations of sleeping in a safe, controlled environment. And then stability for our environment. Environmental integrity is the core value in Santa Cruz. We give that. The oversized vehicle ordinance will help improve the environmental conditions, improve access to our coastal community for all residents and visitors. And we believe that could be something that could really be beneficial. And I'll turn it over to Director Butler.
Thank you, Chief Mills, and good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Lee Butler, Deputy City Manager, and I've got a handful of slides here and will aim to quickly go through the ordinance provisions. So the ordinance has a series of definitions and, and as Chief Mills mentioned, the council adopted an ordinance in 2015. And this ordinance has a number of changes associated with that. These changes are incorporated into the presentation here, but all of the, the overall ordinances attempted to be captured in these handful of slides here. So there's unloading and loading is defined and there are some exceptions for parking allowances when unloading and loading is occurring. There is a definition for out of town visitor that allows for a permit to be issued for a person that is visiting, a city resident. And oversized vehicles are defined in the ordinance as being over 20 feet long or greater than seven feet tall or, sorry, greater than seven feet tall and greater than seven feet wide. So the definition has changed. And then the definition of resident is provided and you can see that here, we can go back to it if you've got questions. Go ahead, next slide. The base of the ordinance specifies that there is no oversized vehicle parking between midnight and 5:00 AM. And there are permit allowances that would allow parking during those times and we'll get to those in a few minutes here. The ordinance speaks to prohibiting utility connections on streets and sidewalks. It prohibits open fires. It requires that the oversized vehicles, the surrounding area is maintained in a safe and hygienic manner. And there are limitations on where oversized vehicles can park, proximity to certain transportation features that like intersections that might, where they could cause a challenge with line of sight. And then no unattached trailers can be parked unless they're actively being loaded and unloaded. And then as I mentioned before, residents may obtain a permit to park immediately adjacent to their residence or if that spot is not available within close proximity to the residents. There are also some changes to Chapter 16.19 of the municipal code. That code already speaks to the prohibition on the dumping of material into our storm drains. And this modification would make it explicit that that includes, but is not limited to disposal of sewage or gray water into the storm drain system. The overnight parking permit does allow residents to have a valid permit for one year and to park four periods of up to 72 consecutive hours per month. So a resident that's owning their RV could park it on the street in proximity to their house for those lengths of time. And then out of town visitor permits would be valid for 72 hours and a resident may receive no more than six out of town visitor permits in a year. The recommendation that the council members brought forward also includes the, the creation of an ad hoc subcommittee that would be appointed by the mayor, that would be supported by staff. And that subcommittee would develop policy direction on the expansion of And that subcommittee would develop policy direction on the expansion of city operated or city sponsored safe parking permit programs for unhoused residents and or um registered oversized vehi- oversized vehicles in the city of Santa Cruz. And the um the recommendation that is included as part of the ordinance is that this would be implemented, the program would be implemented prior to enforcement of the overnight parking restrictions included in the ordinance. And that is the last slide. As you heard from um a number of the others, um the uh council members are suggesting that we take public input this evening and bring the ordinance back for a first reading at a subsequent hearing. And I think we are all available for any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Director Butler. I appreciate that. I do have one quick um uh on the first proposed changes slide, just to avoid any confusion. If you could pull, are you able to pull that up again with the timeframe? I believe it's midnight to five AM as a, I think it said twelve PM to five AM. And I just didn't want to have any confusion around that.
Thank you. Um I I caught that immediately before the uh the meeting and changed it to midnight, but I think that uh
Oh, you just have to go back.
It's uh this one right here.
Yes.
Yeah, it's it, you're you're correct. Uh it is midnight to five AM. Um and um I I think Chief Mills must have already had the presentation because I saved it ahead of time and uh it saw that it didn't make it in. So thank you for pointing that out and and being clear for the public.
Thank you. Okay, um Mayor Myers had to sign off, so I will continue to move us forward um with that. And so um I'd like to bring it up to any questions from council members. And I see a couple of hands. Uh so Councilmember Colin Perry Johnson and then Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. I just wanted to also clarify that the last slide um uh said the policy direction for ad hoc committee to work on city sponsored safe parking. Um but that will also include working with county partners and faith community to do safe parking um in unincorporated area. I just wanted to clarify that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown and then Councilmember Cummings.
I have several questions. Is it okay if I just go ahead and they're sort of different overlapping? But okay, so um uh first I'll just say thank you. I'll I'll save comments for later, but thank you for your work on this. Um and I recognize that it is a a serious issue and it's a serious challenge to figure out how to address it. Um I um am wondering, so one question, given the history with the Coastal Commission, um what kinds of conversations have taken place? Has that been an engagement with the Coastal Commission? Or has this been mostly around looking at um legal framework in which those and interpreting that in order to develop this this um proposal? And so that's one question. Um and then probably because they're sort of different questions, I'll just start there and then go with the next one after. Yeah, like what's the Coastal Commission say, if anything?
Um I maybe I'll I'll start that off and uh and see if anyone else wants to join in. Um I have had a conversation, our our parking program manager, Brian Burgino and myself uh had a Zoom meeting with the Coastal Commission regarding uh the ordinance shortly after um the council direction um in June um to get their um uh to get their take on it and to understand their uh the process. Um and um they basically highlighted the um the outcomes of the twenty sixteen um Coastal Commission discussion and um noted that the Coastal Commission in particular at the time was looking for um a better understanding of um where RVs and oversized vehicles would be able to park. Um and so they were looking uh for more information on the affirmative side. They were also looking for some additional statistics um related to um the uh the issues that sometimes arise around this. So you know, trash collection and um and dumping of of sewage and so forth. So those were the the key items um that we talked about. And I'm not sure if others wanted to chime in, Tony or or Brian.
Okay, I'll just fire off the next question then. So of the the concerns that you know, the the specific problems associated with um RV camping um around um illegal dumping and some of the other issues that are, you know, um quality of life. I think you is they may fit in that category that you have, um nuisance. Where it seems to me, don't we have laws on the books about illegal dumping? I mean, there's environmental health regulations, there's there's, where are these covered elsewhere? And why can't we enforce using those? Um I imagine that it's a it's a question of, there's logistical challenges and all kinds of challenges, but like what about this is specifically going to enhance the ability to um the city's ability to do enforcement on those activities? Um and has there been any conversation about um other efforts that the city could undertake in order to help um mitigate those problems regardless of the activity? You know, what, how much we can change behaviors or, you know, like what can the city do to help kind of mitigate that? So where's that that conversation at? And um I guess that's for anybody who is wants to take it on. I see um Vice Mayor Brenner is shaking her head. So the conversations are happening. I'd love to hear more.
Andy, do you want, do you want to take a crack at that or do you want me?
Um we can both do a little bit of it. Tony, you want to go ahead and go first and I'll I'll back clean up?
Yeah, um the so there are a lot of um ordinances on the books that prohibit the kinds of nuisance conduct that are often associated with overnight parking or really parking of an RV for an extended period of time in one location. Um it's not just overnight aspect of it. It's the fact that it stays there and there's littering and there's other nuisance conduct that sort of builds up over time. Um an infraction citation for littering um can can be written if there's a witness to the conduct and can can verify that um that it occurred and and identify the person who engaged in it. However, um what happens in these situations is that the problems tend to accumulate and get worse as the conduct continues. And um and and just writing a citation, even if it's a misdemeanor, even if you could arrest someone and take them into custody, um the the way the court process works these days is they would be right back out on the street um within an hour and and go back to the parked RV and continue to engage in the kind of conduct that that we're trying to address. So moving um these vehicles along seems to be the only effective way to address some of the nuisance conditions that become associated with them. Andy?
Yeah, I think that's right. Uh part of the issue with uh crimes such as litter and illegal dumping is you have to have a witness or else you have to be able to articulate why this, why this specific person did this. Not necessarily that it's that it's justice fair. So this will give us the opportunity uh to cite infractions at the fraction level or the misdemeanor level, depending on the circumstances, uh and then have our own city attorney prosecute these cases. Part of the issue is the um the courts are so overwhelmed with other cases, virtually nothing is getting prosecuted. So um and we had COVID because of the, you know, much more serious crime. Uh and so uh the city attorney for us has had a better track record of getting these things prosecuted. Uh to send that message that look, this is not okay in our neighborhood. And we've written, I mean, hundreds of tickets about parking and uh as other municipal code violations out there on the west side and and you know, it it can help for a little while, but it comes right back. And so this, I believe, can it can help us with the leverage uh to make sure that people are not uh doing uh parking and creating those problems. And I just want to add two things. One is not necessarily uh just unhoused individuals or those living in motorhomes. We get a lot of people coming to town from out of state, but we think it's just okay to park on somebody's street uh for a while while they're on a surf trip or while they're vacationing. Uh this would address all of that uh and not just those who are in house, although it does address that. And then the second part of your question, uh Councilmember Brown, was are there other things that we're doing uh to mitigate that? And yes, um we are consistently warning people and providing them with contact information to AFC if communities to uh be part of the parking program. There are other options available to people should they desire to do that. As well as Public Works, um we put dumpsters at different locations. There's a dumpster out there uh right now at the corner of um um
Shaffer.
Shaffer. Yeah, Shaffer and uh and you know, those get filled up and dumped regularly. I think city staff is really doing what we can uh to try to keep that fairly orderly and give people the opportunity uh to police them, you know, police their locations themselves. And uh uh that's effective at certain levels with different people.
Thanks. Just a quick follow up on on those and thank you for that. I I appreciate the the response and some of which is the in terms of the in the act kind of questions. Um so I guess I'm thinking that when I talk about uh, you know, ameliorating or mitigating, I was also thinking about, and I don't need a specific answer on these, but I I'll just say, um, you know, is there any chance of a dump station on the west side? I mean, even if we do all of this, there's still going to be an issue. Um can we, is there is there some way to um for, you know, provide a little bit of a carrot? Like a place you can do this and um, you know, at a reasonable rate, um along with the stick? Um things like, you know, I'm just thinking about, as I hear you say that um the the cost of, you know, towing, storing, you know, the the cost, the logistics and that kind of the the material impossibility of continuing to do it this way. Are there other, I mean, you know, and I don't know the level of repair of some of these RVs that, you know, it's probably significant cost to get them moving. But I mean, can we think about ways to get people moving so that they can move on their own, you know, move away, right? So um out of the particular offsite. Um so rather than towing and then having to figure out what to do with the junk, um if it's something that is on its, it it could be mobile, you know, is there something the city could do? Um and then I had one more, but I forgot, so I'll I'll just leave the at that moment.
So I think I'll have Director Butler just uh deal with the um the dumping portion. But if I can just uh talk about the other half of it, yeah, our pre- our full preference would be that people would come in compliance with the law, so we would not have to tow their vehicles. None of us want to tow vehicles, especially for a person who this is the last thing they have in life. Nobody wants to do that. But we do need, for the sake of the other half of our community, the majority of our community, we do need to have the ability to say, uh this is not going to be okay. Some of these vehicles are on repair, that there is not even a working restroom in the motor home. And so it goes into a bucket, it gets put outside of the motor home and and people run by that or walk by that and that's becomes difficult for those folks. Um so uh yes, uh we would love for people to comply. In fact, the sheriff's office uh learned today that, you know, complained that some of the people that we've been doing enforcement are now going out in the county's jurisdiction. Um and so um we don't want to play, you know, you know, push the putty somewhere else. We want to help people if we can, but at the same time, we do have responsibility to our community to do what we can. Lee, did you want to address the others?
Sure. Thanks, Chief Mills, and um thank you, Councilmember Brown, for circling back to that because um Chief Mills was talking about in right now. And one of the things that I heard in your question, your your prior question, was um some of the things that we're thinking about doing um and they're kind of on the horizon. And so I appreciate the opportunity to speak to that a little bit. Um one of them, of course, is what um the council members included as part of their um their ordinance language to um have a expanded safe parking program and looking into that in and of itself. But I want to talk about two other things. Um one, the dump station. Um and um the the first thing that I'd say related to that is that um we have been looking at the potential for a dump station at twelve twenty river. Um that does, that will uh a uh not insignificant cost um of infrastructure. Um there's also, we've also been looking at how that site may be utilized for other um homeless services. And so how those um interact with each other, if there are, you know, large vehicles driving onto the site while we also have um individuals who are potentially utilizing that site for other things. Uh that uh we haven't figured out exactly how that um might coordinate yet, but that is a a consideration. And that's a a location where we have the property um and it could feasibly um be installed. So um that's that's one option with rear dump station, which um the the council members know. Um but I'll I'll mention for the sake of the community, the nearest dump station is at the northeast corner of Soquel and um Highway one at the seventy-six station. So it is, you know, it's not super far, but it is, you know, a a decent little ways away. And um second, um you asked specifically about a uh a dump station on the west side. Um I don't know that we have um the the property, I mean, maybe in the public right of way. Um you know, we don't own a specific property, but there may be some option out there in the right of way. And that's certainly something that that um we could talk with Public Works about. I know Public Works has also been looking at um updating the um the the roadway design out there such that there's um a protected bike lane on one side of the road. And so uh we'd have to look and see how all of that would uh would fit in. If I don't think a dump station was contemplated at the time, but I appreciate that suggestion that we can look into. The last thing that I'd want to mention in terms of some of the things that are proactive um is actually just something that we were working on today. And it was in response to an email that went to the city council. Um and um uh Councilmember Brown, you were asking how we help people to to really move on to a better situation. And one of the things that um we have as well as the county is a program called Homework Bound. And if um someone has um a connection in another location, but they don't have the means by which to get there, we can support that and we verify that there is actually that um uh that connection on the other end. But um the the council received an email, uh or at least I received it yesterday. Um I'm not exactly sure when the council received it, but um and it was someone asking, you know, hey, I'm located somewhere else, but I I don't have the gas money to get there, can you help? And um this person had also been coordinating with the county. Uh we reached out with to the county today, um connected with folks and they had already offered the Homework Bound program and connected them with the Homework Bound program to assist them. So so there are programs that we have in place to um to try and help people, um you know, uh take that step up and that step forward.
Thank you. Um I'm just another follow up on that and then I have one last question and then I'm um I'm sure I'll have more, but for the moment. Um so we're, and I'm familiar with the Homework Bound program. Um is that a program that, but I'm not familiar with all the details? Um where, for, so you met, but for example, registration, I know vehicle registration becomes, you know, the longer that you're not registered, the harder it is to kind of figure out what, how to, how to address it. Um so is that something that can be, that people can get help with through Homework Bound? Or do you know of any other other resource, I guess? Um I'm just trying to think about ways to provide safety nets that is also, you know, facilitating uh improvement, I I guess. So um just anything, just those kinds of things or, you know, I'd love to just keep talking about them, I guess.
Second, if I may jump in, um that's all right. Um uh thank you for those questions, Councilmember Brown. That that is something that we've been talking to some of the neighbor groups are very interested in supporting is um doing fundraising and providing some funds for vehicle repairs, vehicle registration, um support with dumping vouchers, dumpster vouchers. So um those have been discussed, nothing's been set in stone, but those are some ideas that the um neighborhood groups of the faith community that we've been, faith members of the faith community that we've been talking to. community that we've been talking to are very interested in pursuing.
Great. And I hope the city can help coordinate in whatever role and help support that. Then I have a question, and I just want to make sure I'm getting this correctly. The program recognizing that this is, you know, first shot and there's much conversation to be had before, you know, and then the first reading and second reading. Is the, is, does the proposal, does that mean that so somebody who has an RV, who wants to get a permit must, can only get that permit if they have a residence that they can park it, that they, that they have access to, that they can park it in front of? So you have to say you have a residence in order to have the RV parking, which seems a little, I mean, the attempt to address a challenge, but it seems like it's, it's not really gonna, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how that fits in and will it, you know, will, and who could take it, who could actually use that kind of program if it were to be established? So, does that make sense? Am I right that you need to, you need to have a physical address that has street parking in front of it and that's the place you can park in order to get the permit? Is that correct? Okay. All right. Thank you. Looking forward to further conversation.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Cummings and then Councilmember Watkins.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bruner. I just want to express my appreciation to my colleagues in the community for bringing this item to our attention. I know that many people on the west side have been concerned about impacts of RVs that are problematic. And I think it's important that we hear the concerns being raised and work together to find a constructive solution to specific problems. I've worked at the Long Marine Lab at the end of Delaware since 2015. And so I see what's happening down there on a regular basis. And it's a very complicated and complex situation because while there are, you know, problematic individuals, they're down there in problematic circumstances, there's also people down there who have been responsible, who pick up trash after themselves that are not citizens behavior. And so my hope is that, you know, as we move forward, we try to mitigate the negative, we try to mitigate the negative impacts while not penalizing people who are causing problems in our community. Because as it becomes increasingly more expensive in Santa Cruz, I know a lot of people who are, you know, business owners and who contribute to our community, who are shipping to living in vehicles because they just can't afford rents and they would prefer to invest money so they can, you know, eventually buy a home. So I guess the first question I have is that, I do want to follow up on that question regarding the Coastal Commission because one of the things I noticed, and for those members of the public who aren't aware, there was an article in the Good Times this morning where it was, you know, brought to the attention that the appeal was to ban, that was rejecting the ban on the previous ordinance that was submitted was rejected 11 to 1 by the Coastal Commission. And, you know, one of the things that's quoted in this article by one of the members of the Coastal Commission is that in the time since the, this vote was made, they told the city that if they want to come back, the commission to come back with evidence concerning two issues. One, what is the need for this restriction? And two, what is the plan on where people displaced are supposed to go? And so, you know, this has been with the Coastal Commission since 2016. And I'm just curious, you know, what we're doing right now is introducing an amended version of that same ordinance. And what I'm concerned with is just what is the likelihood that this isn't going to get appealed and we're going to be in the same process? Because I would imagine that, you know, if it passes, then it's going to have to go to the Coastal Commission, then it gets voted on by the Coastal Commission at some future meeting. If we haven't done anything since 2016, then we're just going to find ourselves in the same situation. So I'm just kind of curious what's been done to mitigate the impacts or the issues that were raised in 2016? And how is this any different from what we submitted previously?
Can the city attorney respond to that?
Yeah, I can respond to it. I think, first of all, I think the, while I didn't read that, is an accurate summary of what occurred at the Coastal Commission in August of 2016. I think the effort that has been made by the, the group that's been working on this ordinance is to be prepared to get appealed to the Coastal Commission and, and to be prepared to answer that question. The language of the ordinance specifically contemplates a safe parking program being implemented and other measures so that when the question is asked, there's a good answer. And there really wasn't a good answer when the matter was presented to the Coastal Commission in 2016. I might add that the issue before the Coastal Commission was whether to find that there was a significant enough issue that the Coastal Commission wanted to hear the appeal on its merits. So the Coastal Commission made a substantial issue finding, didn't necessarily reject the ordinance, but it did signal that it was going to take a very careful look at it and, and probably would have not ultimately certified it. So we need to have a better answer when we talk to the Coastal Commission this go around.
Yeah. I guess one concern I do have along those lines is I met with some of the AFC members a few weeks back, and one of the individuals was, was operating the safe parking program. And one of the comments that was made was that, in our conversation, was that, you know, they, there are city issues in terms of having people who can staff some of these sites. And I know that the safe parking program that was located in the lot over by Wheelworks and by the arena, that was taken offline because they were just having so many issues with that lot. So one thing for me that's kind of concerning is just, you know, are we going to be able to find enough people in the community on a help, like monitor and run these programs? And Chief, I'm not sure if you can maybe comment, is the program at the PD still up and running in terms of the safe parking program?
They have not been here for a while. I have not seen them in their frontline.
Okay. Like, that's, that's just one concern is, you know, how we can increase that. I did want to ask about enforcement. And I know that this is, you know, there's two aspects of this. There's a, you know, criminal issue if people are, you know, committing crimes who are living in these vehicles, similar to if somebody's committing a crime who lives in a house and police responding to those calls. But then in terms of enforcement of this particular ordinance, since this is kind of a parking issue, is this something we would expect police to be responding to? Or would there be, you know, traffic, similar to other permit programs that we have in town, is this kind of a traffic enforcement issue? And I know that, I tried reaching out to Mark Dettle, Public Works Director, before this, but he's out of town. And so I got in a way message, so I just figured I'd ask at this point in time.
Councilmember Cummings, I think it traditionally falls on our shoulders to do this. However, there are other entities in the city who are capable of writing parking citations as well as code enforcement stuff. So parking could, if they so choose, to go out and do these kinds of enforcement where there's parking involved. The misdemeanor portions of the ordinance would need to be done by the police. But just straight parking enforcement can be done by parking, parking enforcement is a completely different division of the, of the, of the city.
Great. And then, you know, there's a large part of this ordinance speaks to people who are homeowners who have RVs, so residents in town who have RVs. And I'm just curious if that's been a problem, like how, to what extent has that been a problem where we're needing to include that in this ordinance? Because, you know, one of the things that I'm concerned with is that this isn't to our, specific to RVs, it's oversized, it's any vehicle that's over the, over 20 feet, right? And so that also includes work vehicles, that also includes fans. And the one issue for me in particular is that there, you know, and it's an issue on equity, not everybody in the city of Santa Cruz has a driveway. And so there are neighborhoods where the only street is on street parking and if somebody has a vehicle that falls outside of this, you know, that's greater than 20 feet, they can't necessarily park their vehicle on their street for more than four days. Right? So I'm wondering, has that, you know, I guess the question is, has the issue of people who are residents owning large vehicles been, you know, an issue to the point where we need to create a law to enforce against them having these vehicles?
I can tell you that from just getting complaints from community members, that yes, it can be a problem. It's not uncommon for us. I remember one not too long ago in the Fran Street neighborhood where a person had a large bus and kept it in front of their house for an extended period of time. I think they've been ready to go on vacation, but had there for a great deal of time. And so several neighbors were upset about it. And then we wound up tagging the bus and they moved it. And so it became a, a move the bus game. And so, yeah, that is just one anecdotal story, but it's not uncommon for us to, to get those kind of, of issues. We also, this says that, that we park semi trucks, both attached and unattached trailers on the street as well. And so it, it can be a problem.
Great. I've only got three more questions and hopefully they're quick. One, I guess, so I was, I noticed when the, the West Side story operation happened and we did see, you know, vehicles that I guess were problematic were towed, some were left that I guess weren't problematic. And, you know, in part, that seems like it could be, you know, an approach we're taking where we're not penalizing those people who are complying. And, you know, ideally, we would be trying to give it people every opportunity possible to fix their vehicle or, you know, bring their vehicle up to code and if they're not, you know, if they're not in violation of any other law. But my question is, when, when those people are approached, what kind of resources are being offered to them? Because I think the thing that we don't want to see happening is that, you know, people have shelter, that shelter is now taken away and then now they're put on the, on the street in Santa Cruz versus also if they have an opportunity to leave, you know, that they could have that as an option. So I'm just wondering if you can speak to that.
Yeah, I sure can. Thank you for bringing that up because I really feel like our officers use a great deal of discretion when they're towing these vehicles. I can give you a couple of examples. Two families that were living out there in their motorhome with small children, and we did not tow those vehicles. We asked them to get their parking tickets taken care of. We asked them to, you know, move to a different location, but we did not tow those vehicles. It made no sense for us to put a child on the street. And, and so our officers do approach this with a great deal of compassion. I saw a social media story that a person in these was displaced and put on the street who was handicapped. And I asked the officers about that and their response was, no, he had someone to go home with. He was a local person who had a place to go to when they, when they towed that car. The reality is, some of these vehicles have had dozens of citations. They know that they're far out of compliance. This wasn't a, five citations and on the 22nd day when we can lawfully tow it, we towed it. This has been an ongoing thing. And I can tell you that also that our officers are pretty diligent about making sure that people understand that there are other options available, whether it's handing out an AFC flyer or asking them to move. I have been out there, talked to people, asked them to move, asked them to go somewhere else and because this doesn't make sense to inundate a neighborhood like that. So I think our officers do a pretty darn good job of that. Second piece, and I want to comment, is I think the county has also been out there talking with people as well. And so I don't know that this, you know, we do it because we believe this is the humane, the correct thing to do, but I don't see this as a sole police responsibility to, to help people get into homes. There's been some recent research that showed that people aren't really willing to listen to the police about those kinds of things. And so I'd much rather have other people do that, but when you're the only game in town, sometimes you do things just because of necessity. So I, I think that, you know, we want to make sure that people have that option to get it fixed, to leave, to do something else rather than stay there in a broken down state.
And then I just have one more question. And this is for Public Works, and I know the Public Works Director's not around, so I hope someone might be available. Or maybe this can go to anyone of staff who's been kind of involved in this. But, you know, we've discussed different types of parking permit programs before, and I'm just curious and understanding what resources it will take to stand up this kind of a program in terms of, you know, because we're going to need access applications for a variety of different types of permits, obviously, because you have the residential, you have visitor. And so I'm just wondering, you know, what are, what types of resources is it going to take to create this program, stand it up in the timeline around that?
We have Nathan Ewen, who is filling in for Director Dettle from Public Works, and Brian Borg here. So if either of you would be able to answer that question.
Yeah, Justin, I think it's a, it's a very good question. I think there's still some implementation cost modeling that we need to do, but in, in part, we're already kind of established to be able to handle permit programs based on all of our other permit programs that we have. You know, we have a pretty significant residential parking permit program already, you know, outside of the Coastal Commission. And on the east side, we have another pretty big one that's been growing. So under those programs, we already handle a lot of process applications, you know, residential verifications. I don't think that this is going to add or grow to the point where it's causing too much more burden than what we've already created with those existing programs. And we already have those staffed. And as you know, like September, right now, we're going through, you know, the West Side programs, September 15th, and we have a number of people inundating that office and that office is busy. The nice thing about this annual program is I think it'll trickle into demand, it won't be all at once. And so I think it'll kind of just roll into our normal processes. You know, renewals will happen as people need it as opposed to, you know, a start date for a program to start. But we probably, you know, we'll have to make sure that we, all the costing related to issuing the permits, printing permits, if we have to print them or get stickers or hang tags, or if we need any additional staff to help with processing, you know, those, there will be added costs to rolling this into that. But, you know, we already, you know, processed a significant amount.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, that concludes my questions for now, and I have a few comments after we hear from the public.
Thank you. Councilmember Watkins?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I will keep my questions short, and I know we haven't gone to the, to the public yet. I, I think a lot of my questions have been answered. I guess I'll just make a couple of short comments and then I have one, one question in regards to process. So as I read it, that this, you know, since the first ordinance was passed or attempted, a number of other jurisdictions have adopted ordinances that have moved forward. And so I think we are definitely in a different place. So I just sort of want to highlight that in regards to sort of some of the areas where we did have challenges in the past. There's a lot to have been learned in between now and then. I did understand that the AFC is one service provider, but also just really working with the county and others as we move forward. And, and I guess what I'll just sort of, I guess what I'll say is, I just want, I just really appreciate my colleagues for bringing this forward and for the work that you did on this. I think that as difficult as it is to balance all of the considerations that are before us, environmental and residential and visitors and neighbors and income brackets and areas and all the impacts, right? I think we have something that's not working right now and we want to move forward with something that's better. And it will be, but we continue to move forward in a way that's trying to move us in a way that's balancing all of those needs. And I know, Chief, you brought that up in terms of balance. So I just sort of want to highlight that because I know there are elements that I think we can really get into the weeds in, to tonight or, you know, forthcoming, but having that kind of approach around continuous improvement, but ultimately recognizing that what we have right now and in action and working. And frankly, I will just say, just being, participating in the coastal cleanup events that took place over the weekend, on Saturday, I had Delaware, Natural Bridges and Shaffer. And it is, it is not okay to see the amount of trash and litter and environmental impact, nor the living conditions and the impact that has on the individuals who are residing in those vehicles as well as the neighbors and visitors. So I, I recognize the challenges before us and I also am committed to action and moving forward. So in regards to my question, I think since the majority have been asked, and I know a lot of I know a lot of community members are waiting to also ask questions, I guess mine is in regards to process. So what's different from what was presented was that this is not a first reading, that this is an introduction of a concept, ultimately to have a first reading come back. So I guess if I can, are my colleagues hoping that we as councilmembers as well as community members, um, really kind of take the moment to absorb what was being proposed and then to use this time between now and the first reading to ask those questions for clarity to then be informed for how the first reading will go forward? Is that sort of the process tonight that we're proposing or that you're all proposing at this point?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay, great. So in, in that way, so I appreciate that. That gives me more time to kind of think and also to incorporate some of the questions that have been brought up by community members, um, and we can move forward in terms of how we want to hear input, um, this evening. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Thank you. Um, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Watkins. You actually touched on the points I was going to bring up that, so I'll keep it short, but that this is not the same ordinance. Um, it looks different. Um, we have the red line version in the packet, so you can see where those changes are. Um, and it's working simultaneously with the community on, um, alternative, um, alternative options. And there's quantitative data now that, um, isn't just anecdotal. Um, so I just, I'll, I just wanted to reiterate those points. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, there are no further questions from council. We will take it out for public comment and then return to council. Um, let's see, I, my understanding is we will do the groups first, uh, and there is a specific order. Um, so if anybody has their hands raised right now, if you could put them down unless you are a group. And we will, um, start with the groups in the following order. West Side Cares, West Side Neighbors, and then stepping up Santa Cruz. Is that correct, Bonnie?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, um, West Side Care, um, I see you there. If you could press star six on your phone and your time will start.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
So I'm calling on behalf of Santa Cruz Cares, which is formerly known as West Side Cares, just for clarification, to ask that you exist an ordinance that is specifically designed to push the poor into unsheltered homelessness. We've been watching in horror as the Santa Cruz Police Department gleefully tickets and towed vehicles as part of their Operation West Side Story. These operations have left, left at least one elderly disabled person without any shelter at all, who had to rely on people to share his story on social media. Just to note, Andy Mills, your act, he did not have a place to go. We did not see the city stepping in to help this neighbor. You have chosen to tow, ticket, and hand out misdemeanors to people who are financially unable to comply with this policy, directly creating more unsheltered homelessness. At the same time, the shelters around the city have been closing and agreement camps have been swept. The largest camp at the Benchlins is under threat by the city and also by the flood risk of the San Lorenzo. The city is failing our unhoused neighbors on just about every level, even without this new ordinance, which will surely make matters worse. We ask the city council to sponsor programs such as refuse pickup, gray water disposal, and vehicle registration clinics. Ask that you create true low barrier safe parking programs. This is sorely needed now. A moral failing, and we need to stop punishing people for it. We also believe that parts of this ordinance are violations of civil liberties for both the sheltered and unsheltered. Restricting households to one oversized vehicle parked 400 feet from their registered property is absurd. This also directly violates recommendations from the Coastal Commission on previous iterations of this ordinance. These policies are directly going to create more unsheltered homeless. We've already seen the results of policies like this one in our own community and California at large. We don't believe that anyone calling in tonight or anyone on the city council actually wants that. Please do the right thing and think about these unsheltered people. They are living in poverty and these fines and fees are not helping them.
Sonia, you're muted. Our Vice Mayor, I'm here muted.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Santa Cruz Cares, thank you. Um, and now next up, we have West Side Neighbors. Is that, uh, Rafa, are you representing West Side Neighbors? Are you turned up? No. Right now, is there anyone from West Side Neighbors? Is that MP? Press star six.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Hi, there. Are you with Santa Cruz, uh, West Side Neighbors?
Yes, I am. My name is Manuel. I'm a local resident. I live, uh, on the west side. I'm a property owner. I own a business, my father, and husband. And I gotta say, this problem, as previous city council member mentioned, is really getting out of control. We have a very small number of residents in this town in their RVs that are making life very difficult. As a father, um, it's difficult to hear my children say that they're afraid of walking down the street. The environment is obviously being impacted. We've got rats all across Natural Bridges State Park, which certainly has an impact on the monarch butterflies there. And I applaud the city council, really trying to do something about this, but it's, it's really late. Uh, it's, as, as Chief Mills mentioned, 20 years have gone by and nothing has happened here. It's not fair that the people that, 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 the, the ones that really cannot vote, the children or the animals, are being so disproportionately affected by this. I encourage you all to do something about this. I think ordinance is a step in the right direction. I'll also state that we absolutely need enforcement. There are laws in the books today. We need those to be enforced so that it's safe for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, then next is stepping up Santa Cruz. Um, go ahead and press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Serge. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you. Hi, Serge.
Good evening. Uh, nothing in what I'm about to say okay's littering or sewage dumping. Those things are already illegal. There are more effective and more common sense ways to solve these iss- disordernance. Sewage is stated as the biggest problem. As, uh, Lee referred to, uh, the cats recommended a free sewage dump site at 1220 River Street, but why is that not being instituted before we're criminalizing poverty? It's clearly not constitutional to cite a vehicle dweller for litter that is near them without proof that they are the cause, yet that is specifically included in the ordinance. If car registration's the issue, why are people not being attracted to the churches like Holy Cross, which helped pay for that before their home is taken? This proposed ordinance will not stand a legal challenge with the Coastal Commission because it's blocking access to the coastal zone, making some people not welcome to live in or move to Santa Cruz. This, the ordinance says the city may, but does not require it to have safe parking programs. Shelters and safe spaces do not need people forced into their programs. They're already full most of the time. It's not true, it's not helpful to recommend that somebody calls AFC when they're always full. We'll never have enough space in our programs. So we'll have the same problems without any new solutions. This ordinance accedes to the demands of only one constituency. The Health in All Policies section doesn't even refer to the health of those people who are going to be forced into unsheltered home. Multiple studies show that minorities are inordinately affected by these type of ordinances, making obtaining housing and employment more difficult or impossible. Studies show that criminalization of those living in vehicles causes those people onto the, to be moved onto the streets, experiencing more trauma, worse, worse health conditions, and a lower life expectancy. It's stated in the last agenda item that water is our more, most important resource. I'd say that people should be considered our most important resource. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the groups. And so now we will move on to further public comment. Uh, to raise your hand, press star nine. When it's your time to speak, you will be called on and you'll press star six to unmute yourself. So now I will go out to public comment, attendees. Rafa, please, uh, press star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm calling on behalf of Santa Cruz MB this evening to express some concerns with the approach that the ordinance, uh, uh, for the ordinance that the city seems to be moving towards. First, though, appreciate the city for committing to expanding options for unhoused folks who live in their vehicles to have a legal safe space to park the vehicle. Uh, we're not necessarily against a permit program, but we are concerned that if proposed, the program could leave the most vulnerable members of our community without a legal option to park their vehicle. The requirement to have had a vehicle registered in the city for six months in order to establish residency seems particularly problematic and is likely unconstitutional, since that same requirement does not apply to housed residents who would want a permit for their oversized vehicles. Our existing Safe Spaces program requires vehicles to have current registration, and there were recently a significant number of vehicles towed for having expired registrations. Under the proposed scheme, those vehicles would not be allowed either in the Safe Spaces program or on public streets. But those people exist and their needs need to be taken into account, too. We cite in tow, we'll be taking away the meager shelter that they have, exacerbating our shortage of shelter beds. Uh, we should be focusing on problems that lift people, on solutions that lift people up. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, Father Joseph Jacobs, press star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate that. So I am the program manager for the Association of Faith Communities Safe Spaces Parking Program. I want to be clear about one thing to begin with, that Safe Spaces is not a city-sponsored program. The city has never sponsored Safe Spaces and has never given any funding for it. So I'm going to plead with people to stop referring to it in that manner. We had plans to submit a request for qualifications to the city for an expanded safe parking program to address this pro- problem. And we were told that there is, quote, "not one cent," end quote, available for funding such a program, and that the city will use its $14 million to purchase the land or matters to create a day center. So I'm really unclear where the funding for, um, expanding the safe parking program is coming from. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Reggie Mifer. Press star six. Do you want to unmute yourself, please?
Hi, um, so I've heard a lot about expansion of safe parking programs and connecting people to housing. Um, but looking over your proposal, all I really see fleshed out is the criminalization piece. And now that we've heard from AFC that, uh, funding around this proposal for the safe parking doesn't really seem there and has never really been there. I mean, I, I really feel like I have to question the authenticity of this proposal. Your presenter is not a member of Health and Human Services, it's not a social worker, it's not a service provider. I mean, it's the chief of law enforcement. So we can talk a lot about services and housing support, but I mean, the focus that you're having speaks louder than the sort of flowery words thrown here and there. And then in Chief Mills' presentation, he's telling us that he has so much extra money and land, it's unaccounted for. Um, and he's just spending it on towing people and taking their shelter away?
Thank you.
Not on a safety.
Okay, the next number is ending in four, nine, three, one. Press star six to unmute yourself.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, so you all talk a lot about health and policies, yet you continue to write and pass policies that are both terrible for public health and not based on any sort of public health policy. As a result of SCPD's Operation West Side Story, multiple people lost their only shelter and their only belongings were towed away. It's included medications and disability aids. They're unable to retrieve them because they cannot afford to. We'll codify this behavior into law, and because of the nature of policing, we know that this will disproportionately affect people of color, gender nonconforming people, disabled people, and other marginalized groups. And before you all pontificate about how you believe doing nothing isn't compassionate and we must do something, criminalizing poverty, what you're suggesting, let me reify that no one is asking you to do nothing. We are demanding solutions that actually address the issues community has. Refuse pickup, gray water fixing and registering RVs. Your ordinance fines people for not having enough money to access resources. It does not help people get access to resources and thus it is not public health. Public health is helping those who need the most help to live the best lives that they can. That passes ordinance in the name of public health or compassion is a farce. So at least be honest and admit that the ordinance is nothing more than punishment and a banishment of poor people from our streets.
Vice Mayor, you're muted.
Next up, I have Graham. Press star six to unmute yourself, please.
Thank you for your chance. Okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for the chance to speak today. My name is Dr. Graham Press. I work for the UCSF Banning Off Homelessness and Housing Initiative at the Center for Vulnerable Populations and have conducted research for the past decade with vehicle residents in public parking and safe parking programs in cities like Seattle, San Francisco, and Oakland. I'll speak quickly, uh, today to keep my comments to under one minute, but I'm happy to speak with you further if it's ever possible. As Chief Mills, councilmembers Brown, Cummings, and, uh, previous public comments have explained the primary concerns regarding oversized vehicles, lack of accessible off-street space for vehicle residents to inhabit their home, drain sewage, and dispose household ra- waste. However, this ordinance cannot balance compassion with accountability because approximately, because the approximately 30, uh, off-street space that's currently available is not adequate space for around 300 vehicle residents in Santa Cruz County. Instead, this proposal exposes the city of Santa Cruz and its most vulnerable citizens to undue harm by uniquely mandating the residence of oversized vehicles applied for permits to hours for only four times per month, with no clear process to provide adequate off-street space for these constituents. If accepted by the California Coastal Commission, this proposal, proposed ordinance contradicts the Ninth District Martin versus Boise decision, and, uh, it, like other cities, similar policies will likely trigger a lawsuit.
Thank you. Um, next up, we have phone number ending in four, eight, four, four. Press star six to unmute yourself, please. Oh, we just heard you. Try again. Press star six to unmute yourself. There you go. Are you there? We can, I can hear you unmuting. Try one more time, if not, we can come back to you. Press star six on your device to unmute yourself. Phone number ending in four, eight, four, four. Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Hello?
Uh, hello? So. City officials have no problem creating squalid and wretched conditions. This law empowers the police to harass site and tow emergency survival housing, so-called oversized vehicles. Who cares about their welfare? Not this council, but they would have enacted, uh, your disposal systems, as mentioned by others, assistance for disabled vehicles, and other obvious measures. Instead, a dis- new displacements and restrictions designed to tease out a burp of satisfaction from the well-fed bellies of West Side property owners. The state eviction moratorium ends at the end of this month. The city moves on the homeless encampments like the Benchlins. What can we do? See someone being harassed by Mills Ticket Squad? Stop, witness, and... Time to choose. Act, watch, or turn away. Don't wait until it's your turn.
Thank you. Next up, I have phone number ending in eight, three, four, six. Press star six to unmute.
As a mother and former teacher of underserved youth, I am convinced that the best way to teach empathy and the importance of building a just and equitable society is to model it. What are we teaching our youth when we criminalize people living in abject poverty? When we continue to make uninformed judgments and sweeping fear-based generalizations about people who may suffer from... people who may suffer from mental illness, drug addiction, cycles of oppression, or just a lack of city-supported resources? What are we teaching our kids when the SCPD makes an aggressive and boastful public display of destroying a person's due to out-of-reach unpaid parking and registration fees that they were never offered to help pay for in the first place? What then do we tell our children and students when they ask where these human beings left with no shelter and no possessions will go now? Do we lie and say there are beds and housing available when we know full well there aren't nearly enough, that the cops are heroes and the poor are criminals simply for trying to break the confines of their given condition? This is a decades-long failure of empathy, a failure to see past comfort and privilege, a failure to get educated on the complexities of poverty and survival behaviors. Defund the police, invest in a community of care, and oppose the oversized vehicle ordinance.
Thank you. Next up, I have number ending in 0249. Press star six, please, to unmute yourself.
Hello.
Hi there.
City Council. Oops, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Carol. Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you for all your hard work on the long time coming, and I know it's a very difficult issue to tackle with a lot of moving parts. Robert North said it best, allowing people to live on the street in squalor and wretched conditions is horrible. It's not compassionate. People who are living on our streets, especially on the Lower West Side, receive no services. They get the disdain of the local residents who are tired of the multiple impacts that they've experienced from having people live on the street without services. We need to provide help for people. It's not the endgame to allow people to live like this forever. We have to provide places for people to go where there are services available to them to help them to get out of their situations and to improve their lot in life. I applaud the city council for looking into the resources available to help us make more safe parking available for people who need it, and to help clean up the situation that exists in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, I have phone number ending in 2174. Press star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you. First of all, a big appreciation to the Vice Mayor for saying press star six. I can't tell you what a difference that makes when you're on this end. My name is Gillian Greenside, and I wasn't going to call in and speak. I haven't read the ordinance. I'm well aware of the issues, but I heard a couple of comments that I felt I'd like to respond to. One is that this has been going on for 20 years. Well, since COVID, myself and a few friends, we walk before we swim at Cal's. So instead of West Cliff, we've been doing the distancing and everything at the Marine Lab. And so Delaware is where we park or bicycle. And I can assure you that for the past year, this has not been a big problem, but it has escalated in the past, I'd say, two to three months. Escalated. Each week, it is obviously getting worse. I wish the opponents who talk in generalities, and I understand their sympathies, but I wish that they could get involved in... Oh, that went quickly. Okay. I had quite a bit more, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, I have Joy. Please press star six to unmute.
Hi, this is Joy Shendeldecker. I am a parent and homeowner on the west side. I'm also an organizer with some local groups, including Sanitation for the People. And I think it's really interesting, presentation was paired with the water presentation just before it, which I imagine a lot of people didn't listen carefully to. It talked a lot about Prop 218 from 1996, which has basically taken water, sewer, and refuse services out of the public common good and made them private enterprise funds that are only available to ratepayers or people who have property to live in. So if you don't have property, you don't get services. We can, as a community, decide to, instead of having a comprehensive approach, have a specific community approach, and we can figure out how to pay for more services instead of criminalizing people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have JB. Please press star six to unmute.
Hi, I'm a Santa Cruz resident. I'm strongly in favor of amending Title X. Santa Cruz's homeless problem, as it currently stands, is unacceptable. It is a humanitarian problem, it is an environmental problem, and it is getting worse over time. One of the big drivers of this problem is a collective refusal to enact and enforce reasonable traffic and parking laws, especially when it comes to RVs. The lack of political will to prohibit and enforce overnight RV parking is not compassionate towards the mentally ill and drug addicted that inhabit these, quote-unquote, dwellings. It is certainly not compassionate towards Santa Cruz taxpayers and residents. It is destroying our community, it is destroying our environment, it is disincentivizing the most vulnerable among us to change their lives for the better and get help. Ergo, to amend Title X. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have phone number ending in 0135. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name's Mike Polhamus. I'm a lifelong Santa Cruz resident and high school teacher. I've heard a lot tonight about the ethics in the one solution or another. The main issue here, as I see it, is the ability to pay for services for people who cannot pay for themselves. And the opportunity to place a sales tax at the ballot could have been used for this purpose. However, obviously, that's not an option anymore. But the bottom line is that if you don't have money to pay for services, such as acquiring property and being able to provide said services, none of this is ever going to change. I urge the city council to revisit the sales tax issue, put it on the ballot, and let the people vote on it, so that at least at some point in time in the future, we can have the funds, with a city that is essentially insolvent, to buy property and to create safe parking programs and other types of services for people who cannot help themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Alicia Cool. Star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead. So I just wanted to kind of echo that many of these things that are being discussed, like dumping sewage and things like that, are crimes. The homeless union has never supported crimes, and we've always thought that those things can be mitigated with proper use of the police department, rather than criminalizing people in general. When you take away people's RVs or excessively fine them to try to take away their RVs, what you're doing is you're putting more people, you know, in San Lorenzo Park. And unfortunately, that's a problem for our entire community. So I would really urge you to focus on safe parking programs, and safe parking programs that include everyone, not ones with limited capacity, ran by just one person, because that's a really high barrier for most people. And I just want to be very clear that if this does pass, litigation will follow. I'm the one that worked on that, so I want to just clear that up for the entire community, that that's not in question here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have, let's see, Jasmine. Press star six to unmute.
My name's Jasmine, and I rap in the west side. But I've been hearing a lot of, you know, talk about disrupting the monarchs or something. And, you know, a lot of like words with D, disrupt the monarchs, what about fellow humans? Or it's difficult for people to walk by people in RVs. What about the fact that they're in desperate conditions often, or don't have any other options? And homeless people are more often victims of crime than perpetrators. I haven't heard of homeless people, you know, hurting children, you know, for the person who said they're worried about their children. I think it's more uncomfortable, and that's what people don't want to face. Also, this idea of leaning on the AFC for safe parking when it's defunded doesn't make any sense. And stop passing the buck to county. We need to find alternatives and safe sleeping solutions first. Don't displace or criminalize desperate people. And I agree with the other caller. We should just defund the police and reallocate these funds to programs like this that can actually support Health and Human Services. What this is right now is not compassionate, and it is not humane. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is phone number ending in 9248. Press star six to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody involved for the attempt. The attempt is with honor, and it's time that we, as Americans and Santa Cruzans, recognize this. And I think in particular Chief Mills, and Mr. Candati, and Lee Butler, and I think probably previously Mr. Bernal, for pushing this to the point where it becomes an issue that can be litigated and legislated. And there's deep honor in that, and it's what needs to be done. I want to say thank you to all, and pass this. It's an attempt that has honor and is dignified, and it's something that we need to do. It'll help us to push the issue into the consciousness of people that we can deal with poverty in the way that we haven't maybe since the 1930s. Thank you. And thank you, City Council, for addressing this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Looks like that concludes our public comment. We have a couple more hands that went up, so go ahead. Abby, press star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, I live on the lower west side, within a mile of Delaware. I visit it often and speak to the residents who live in the vehicles there. I was there when the police did West Side Story, in which you towed many vehicles. I was there when they were going to tow the oversized vehicle that had a 12-year-old child, their mother and their grandmother who resided in it. You had all the intentions to tow that vehicle, that haven't begged and pleaded with the officer in charge at the time to not tow them, that they had a 12-year-old inside. That officer said it was too late, and there was nothing they could do once they called the tow company. I put up a protest, and luckily Sergeant Burrow decided to override the choice of the officer in charge of towing vehicles. Believe me, if I wasn't there, that vehicle would have been towed. So please don't stop using that as an example of you having compassion. So many lies you have mentioned, such as a disabled person had a place to go, that they had no intention of towing the RV with a 12-year-old, and that AFC is a sponsored program. Thanks to Father Joseph, who called in, most of you know that many people are turned away from AFC. You're just pushing out people out into the street. I know you know that. This is not a matter of compassion. Stop criminalizing the homeless.
Thank you, Abby. Next, I see phone number ending in 0711. Press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Sophia Alarcon. I am a resident of Santa Cruz, and I currently reside in Live Oak. I am also formerly houseless, and I was formerly houseless in Santa Cruz County in my vehicle. So I have some experience in that area. And the main thing I want to say, because I don't have that much time, is that treating the houseless like everybody else should be the priority, and that means funding for these programs that we're talking about, these safe parking programs. But mostly, it also means providing actual housing units and services for dignity of the few men we're talking about. And it sounds like we, the staffing, isn't really an issue for some of these programs. So I'm kind of curious, what were the other issues with the, some of the previous things? Anyways, I think one of the other things that stood out to me about a lot of things that you said was low barriers. So, right here, we're creating barriers, so you don't want to tow people, but you want to ticket them. There's just a lot to say, but anyways, thank you.
Vice Mayor, you're muted.
It looks like that concludes our public comment. No more hands are up, so I will pull it back to Council, and it looks like Councilmember Golda and Councilmember Calentari Johnson. Golda, you, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the public who called in. I'm prepared to make a motion, and I've emailed it to Bonnie, and there's two parts to the motion. It's to continue the item to the meeting of October 26th to allow for the consideration of public comments on the draft ordinance and allow time to prepare associated updates with ordinance language, and to direct staff in cooperation with an ad hoc subcommittee to be appointed by the mayor to establish a subcommittee now, and they can begin exploring what a safe parking program can or should include, should one be established as part or outside of any future ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Calentari Johnson, your hand's up.
Yeah, thank you. I'll second that, and I just want to add just a couple comments. This is as part of number two, I don't know if we need a friendly amendment, but that, just to clarify that there have been a group of us working on this, so it's really a continuation of this work, and just to formalize a continuation of this work. So just some comments. I also want to thank the community members who took the time to call in this evening. You know, some of the lessons learned with our work with the camping ordinance was that we really take the time and space, even though this has been in the work for a long time, for years, by various members, to take the time and space to hear from community members, receive input, and bring forward an ordinance that is a compromise space. Not everybody will be happy, and that's the case when we come to complex and challenging issues like this. You know, somebody said that we move forward with law enforcement and not Health and Human Services. I just want to remind the public and remind us that we, the city, does not have a Health and Human Services. We don't have a department, we don't have a team. It's out of the scope of the city to provide those types of services. And we know this can't be done in a vacuum. So our approach is, as Chief Mills said, to find that balance of accountability and compassion. And I know people are defining it different ways, but I do believe that action is compassion, because we can get sucked into a loop of finding the flaw, we can get sucked into a loop of not good enough, and those narratives have doomed our community and made us polarized and divided. Or we can put one foot in front of the other and launch and formalize a response that will continue to evolve. So that's what I'm interested in doing here. There's part, there are groups out there who are interested in partnering, expanding what's now, and yeah, so I'll just pause there. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Cummings, and then Councilmember Brown.
First off, can we keep the ordinance language up? I've been wondering how we can, if that can go back up. I mean, I have comments to make, and then I can make comments on this, and then we can take it down, or I can make my comments. But either way, one, before I have my comments to make on the general discussion that we've been having, I do want to point out that if we want, if the council or the subcommittee wants to put an item back on the agenda for October 26th, like two weeks of public comp for, you know, community input, and then I would imagine that staff would need time to write the agenda report, which technically would need to be submitted by October 14th, although there is some flexibility around when those get submitted. So that is one concern I have, is that, you know, when we deal with issues on homelessness, like these are very complicated issues, very sensitive topics, and, you know, when it comes to laws that are going to impact members of our community, I think it's really important that we give ourselves time to really get the... important that, um, you, that we give ourselves time to really get, um, the level of community input necessary to, to know that when we're putting this forward, that we're putting something forward that has had the broadest amount of input, um, and that, um, you know, the broad majority of the community feels comfortable moving forward with. Uh, we, you know, we, yeah, something about this issue, um, but what I've found being on the council is that, you know, people really want to be included in these conversations. We saw that with the Tolo and this for many people is the first time they're seeing this item come before. So I would, um, encourage that that be extended and, um, that friendly amendment can be, um, that this item is continued till the subcommittee, um, you know, seems it's okay for it to come back or that there is, you know, no date, um, with, you know, when this can come back. I mean, it's clear that this is something that, um, the, our current Vice Mayor is working on and is supporting and if this needs to go into next year when the Vice Mayor is, than the mayor, we know that there's an opportunity for her to put this on the agenda. But I think what we really need to do is to ensure that there is a diverse and inclusive community process that really provides enough time for people to weigh in and we're all really busy people. I mean, I don't see, you know, regardless of who's on this council, that'd be a lot of, you know, put, setting aside our, our time to, you know, if we really want to have an inclusive process. So what I, is that we extend that timeline out further so that people aren't just really rushing to get everything in, that we're giving the community enough time to digest this ordinance and get their feedback to, uh, the members of the subcommittee and to the council. Um, and then I do, I would, I just want, item number two, um, should, because this is mentioning, um, you know, explore establishment of safe parking programs, it should one be established as part of, um, as part of or outside any future ordinance? The one issue I really want to bring up, and this is, I'll just kind of get into my comments right now, um, I have a really big issue with the discharge of sewage because as it's currently written and to see if, um, somebody from staff could, could comment on this before I get into my comment, what is the current law on discharge of sewage? Because it, my understanding is that a law is already on the books and this isn't something we need to rewrite because, um, I'm really concerned with what's before us today in terms of the language and so somebody could comment on what that specific law is right now.
I can do that. I've got the, um, current section open here. Um, Bonnie, are you sharing your screen?
I can share mine and haul that out.
So this is the, uh, current section here. Would you like me to read it out loud or?
Sure. If your members might be listening, sure.
Sure. Um, so it's sixteen point nineteen point zero seven zero, discharge of sewage prohibited. No person shall cause the discharge of sewage to the storm drain system. In addition, if the, friends, that a building drain or a building sewer is not operating properly and causes the discharge of sewage into the, sorry, to the street sidewalk or storm drain, the director may declare this condition to constitute a public nuisance and proceed to abate that nuisance in accordance with section sixteen point nineteen point one zero, one eight zero.
Okay. I mean, it's, like, that kind of covers no person, period, shall, you know, discharge sewage into the storm drain. And I will say, it was, I, actually I'm looking back at the, um, red line version, it was really confusing to see this kind of inserted in the middle of, um, chapter ten because when I read section six, uh, it affected that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced thirty days after final adoption, provided however, that the enforcement of section ten point four oh, point zero two zero shall not commence until the council passes a resolution confirming that either A, the city has implemented an enhanced safe parking permit program for unhoused residents of vehicles, and she was that because this came after, um, chapter sixteen, the way I read this was that we weren't going to enforce, um, the discharge of sewage until these safe, these safe parking programs were implemented. Now, obviously reading, seeing this again, section six deals directly with, um, you know, chapter ten, but I don't know if somebody can clarify because this is a little confusing for me.
It might be a typographical error there. Um, the intent was to defer enforcement of the overnight parking component, uh, until a safe sleeping program had been established. Um, and I, I think that's, section six is one of the provisions that the committee intends to continue to work on, so that, that I would say out of today is still a work in progress.
Okay. It, uh, it was really confusing because the way I read it, it seemed like we weren't going to enforce discharge of sewage until these safe parking programs were up and that to me makes absolutely no sense.
Yeah, and, and I, I'll just add to the planning director's comments that, um, it is a little bit redundant, but it is clear that the language of the section that was just quoted is primarily intended to deal with, um, sewage discharge from buildings. And so the, the Public Works Director's Nuisance Abatement, uh, Authority does not neatly apply to someone who empties their, uh, black water tank into a storm drain, so, of, uh, having, um, somewhat redundant language in the, in the code.
Yeah. Um, if I may add also, it was the adding of, um, no person shall cause the discharge of sewage or gray water to the storm drain system, including but not limited to discharges of recreational vehicle holding paint. So that was the, the added language.
Okay. I think the order, it, it looks like the section sixteen was kind of embedded within chapter ten, so anyway, it was confusing and, uh, thank you for the clarification. Um, I'll just make my final comments. Um, I think, you know, the homeless issue is, this is a national issue and, you know, when we live in a community where homes that were once able to be purchased by working families are now only accessible by very affluent people because you have two-bedroom houses going for a million dollars and rents continue to go up while, while wages stay stagnant, we, we're only going to see this situation get worse and we're not going to be able to currently build our way out of it. Um, with regards to the first recommended act, printed agenda, I want to say for the record that I'm glad we're not introducing this as an ordinance for publication this evening because I would not be supporting the recommendation as it currently stands. And, uh, in the future, I just think it would be good if we use different language when bringing items forward for community input because when the community sees introduced for publication, that's a first reading and that can really stir up, uh, the community and many people's emotions, the intention of, of what we're hearing before us today. Um, I very much appreciate the work that's been done on this, uh, but based on public comment and the presentation, it's very clear that it still needs work. Um, just a few examples, it doesn't seem like there's a fee schedule that's been worked out for the permits, seems like there may, maybe a lot of unintended consequences that will negatively impact, we're not a nuisance that live in their vehicles and also put more people on the streets if their vehicles are towed and they have nowhere else to go. And I'm also really concerned with, um, you know, whether it's going to get appealed and, or whether this will be upheld by the Coastal Commission. Um, regardless of who's on the subcommittee, I just really encourage, um, that my colleagues to create an inclusive process that engages with a diverse set of stakeholders and that the subcommittee takes its time so that we can have an ordinance that get a broad acceptance and support of the community. I'd be, it sounds like there are three council members who brought this forward who want to be on that subcommittee, but I'll also state that I'm happy, um, to be on that ad hoc committee. As I mentioned before, I've worked at Long and Rain Lab and have worked there since twenty fifteen, so I encounter these, the issues that are before us on a daily basis when I go to work. Um, couple recommendations, um, consider providing longer-term permits for people who are not causing nuisance. That way we're clearly trying to address people who are, are problems and we're not trying to criminalize everyone who's homeless. Um, I very much think the county needs to be involved and it sounds like that's the case. I also think the AFC needs to be involved because I was a little shocked to hear that the person who runs the AFC program was saying that, you know, that is not a program that has received city funding and is not been sponsored by the city and it sounded like, you know, going into this conversation, they've been told. But, um, if that's not the case, I would highly encourage that the AFC is, you know, at the forefront of this conversation at a minimum since they provide these services. Um, as with what the community members said, the six-month residency program seems like a little problem, um, especially for someone like a student who might be moving in or people who may be moving to Santa Cruz in general and it sounds like it might be unconstitutional as well. Um, and it would be, it would be good when this comes back for there to be, um, note in the, in the report of who from the public has been met with, um, to discuss this ordinance in order to provide transparency around who's being included in these conversations. I know that we've done this before with the Loudon Nelson Center, we've done it with the removal of the mission bells where we've clearly stated who has been involved in this process and the groups that they represent and that is really critical so that we are making sure people are, you know, that it's transparent of who's involved in these conversations and that we can see, you know, the diversity of people who are going to be, um, involved in these conversations. Um, that's all the comments I have and, um, I'm, I'd be, you know, I'd like to look to see what that motion looks like again, if those amendments made, you know, that I mentioned earlier around extending the time can be considered. Um, and regardless, I think I'll support the mo, it's just to continue this item and to create the subcommittee, we're not taking action on whether or not we, we support or reject the ordinances before us, so, um, I'll leave my comments there. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you clarify, did you make a friendly amendment or are you just commenting?
I expressed early on that rather than leaving that October twenty-sixth date that we leave in open-ended, um, we leave it open-ended and it's clear that this is an issue that, um, I know the mayor has expressed she's, you know, is concerned with, sounds like the Vice Mayor is also concerned with this and so, you know, leaving it up to you all to determine what best date to bring it back is completely fine and I think it provides flexibility, allows the subcommittee to determine, you know, this has had enough attention to where it should be brought back to the council. So if you have a set date, it usually ties your hands and I'm just trying to provide flexibility for whoever works on this.
Thank you. It sounds, uh, it sounds like you're a comment versus, um, a friendly amendment. Wait, you're muted. Councilmember Cummings.
I'll make that an official, that we, um, leave the date open-ended, so continue this item, uh, to allow for consideration of public comment on the draft ordinance and to allow time to prepare associated updates to ordinance language.
Uh, okay. Let's see, does, uh, the maker of the motion accept the friendly amendment?
I'm, I'm not interested in accepting the friendly amendment. We've had conversations today with the city attorney, with Lee, we made the decision, um, that we wanted to continue this item and we feel prepared and ready that we would be able to go forward by that date.
And does the seconder of the motion?
Yeah, I, yes, I agree with, uh, with Councilmember Golda.
Uh, so I'm, uh, moving on, let's see, I see several hands, uh, Councilmember Brown and then Councilmember Watkins.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, so I was, I had made some comments that were, um, a little more positive than I'm, what I'm about, dismayed to hear there's not any interest in, um, taking a little more time on this because I think, um, that the, um, you know, as Councilmember Calentari Johnson said, you know, um, we're, you know, this polarization, this, this challenging situation we're in, the polarization, if it's from doing nothing, I believe the polarization is from, um, you know, being hasty and not having that inclusive and diverse community input process that Councilmember Cummings suggested is really essential to, um, moving forward in a way that, that does not, um, um, kind of continue to, um, gin up the, you know, the emotions and, and the polarization. Having that process, I mean, I have no idea who you've all met with, I have no idea who you meet with in the next two weeks. Um, how will people, I mean, we heard from a lot of community members who, um, are very concerned and how will they access providing input? Who are the stakeholders? There's no, I'm not hearing any, um, response to that, that concern and I'd like to and if I, I'll change my mind. Um, but, um, I also, you know, I'm, I mean, I'll, so now I'll go back to the pub, what I was trying to, hoping to be positive here. Um, you know, I'm, I'm pleased that there are council members, um, who are interested in working on this. I'm pleased, um, that at least ostensibly you're interested in, um, engaging with the community on this and I'm, um, also happy to see that there's, um, at, at a minimum an attempt to begin to talk about, um, non-enforcement, um, possibilities here, which I think had they been implemented sooner, we wouldn't be quite where we're at, uh, today. Um, I, I'm, so I'm, I'm glad that this is happening and I want to be supportive of it, but I want to see, um, you know, the community members who are stepping up and saying, no, this, you know, this feels like, um, you know, we're really criminalizing vulnerable people, I want them to have a voice in the conversation and not just a one minute at a city council meeting. Um, I, um, I'm also, um, you know, a little dismayed, uh, to be hearing kind of pretty different, um, characterizations of what happened with, um, uh, in a couple of cases here with vulnerable, uh, people and it, it doesn't seem to just be a difference of perspective on what's happened here with a, you know, a seven-year-old man and, you know, a family with children. Um, and I, I'm not here to, you know, get to the bottom of that, but I, the point I want to make is that, um, there seem to be very, very different, um, ideas about what's going on and it's very hard to make a decision based upon, you know, hearing conflicting, um, kind of information, not perspective, but information about what actually is happening on the ground. Um, the, um, I want to thank, um, the AFC for doing, you know, this, this, you know, I mean, we do, we lean on them, we, we cite, you know, we, we refer to them as like, you know, and we kind of put it in a box like, oh, it's okay, and they're, you know, we'll just keep, get that going and, you know, we, maybe we can expand upon it. We don't even support it now, so, and they, they've been told, there's no money for you. So the idea that that is something that we can just kind of lean on and feel good about is, you know, I, I, it just rings a little hollow, I'm sorry to say, and I'd like to see that, um, come, that taken very seriously in the subcommittee's conversations. Um, I think, um, it's, it's critical. I mean, if, if, if we, if, if we want to actually achieve the goals, the, the stated goals, um, creating a, another, an ordinance and then saying, well, we're going to talk about all this stuff and, you know, but we have to do this first, as with the CSSO, I don't believe is a productive way to move forward. Um, this is not about whether or not I agree, you know, I, I approve of, um, you know, vehicles that, you know, I believe there's a nuisance, I believe it is a challenge for people, I believe that people have reason to be concerned and want change. Um, I agree with that, but this is not going to create the kind of change that, um, I think people are, you know, there's rosy picture being painted here. Um, sorry, my, my positivity kind of faded when I heard, no, we, you know, we're done, we're not, you know, we want community input, but we're not going to talk about this, we need to do it now. Um, it just doesn't give me a lot of, um, confidence that something, um, that really takes those concerns into account is going to come back to us. I hope I'm wrong. Um, and then, um, I guess the last thing I'll just say is, um, for, when I think about the e- experience that people have when they have nothing, I mean, Chief Mills said it, you know, um, we don't want to take away their, their, you know, people's last, um, you know, resource, but that is what's happening and that will continue to happen and it will happen, um, in greater numbers. Um, if we, if we go in this direction without taking seriously, um, what the, what the city, um, can do to support people, um, you know, getting a car register or a vehicle registered costs a lot less money than apparently it costs to tow one. So why aren't we, you know, I mean, that is, to say, to just swipe out of sight and say, oh yeah, that's true, um, we're going to talk about that, but not really actually see a foundation for that conversation to happen or a space where that conversation might happen, we, after we leave, um, worries me. And so I'm going to, um, you know, I'll support moving forward with this, but, um, it's very hard to imagine that, um, that what comes back three weeks from now is, is going to, or for a month from now that needs to be completed in two weeks' time is going to address all of those kind of outstanding questions.
You, Councilmember Brown, uh, Councilmember Watkins and then Councilmember Calentari Johnson and then Councilmember Golda.
Um, I think I'll keep my comments brief, but, um, in general, I guess I'll say is, obviously this is a very complex issue and, and, and not only is it a complex issue in regards to the human lives and our environment and all that we're trying to balance earlier, um, but it's a complex issue in terms of process and action and the role of a council in terms of policy. of policy direction and proposals and how we move forward. I think that having been on the council now for over four years, we've spent a significant amount of time trying to think about and talk about how to move forward with some solutions. And I feel, my observation, I don't feel clear from some of my colleagues what that looks like. And so I think for me, I struggle with how do we balance being in process but also being in action? And what does that look like in terms of balancing the people's business? And it's brought before us in terms of our jobs here. We've meetings that have gone on for, for hours and, and we've had endless discussion and sort of broad definition of what we think is adequate process. So I don't think I need an answer tonight and I see that, you know, some of my colleagues' hands have gone up and that, that's fine if there is a response, but I think clarity that means to people will be helpful moving forward and defining how to move forward. Because kicking the can down the road into next year or sort of being okay with status quo essentially is a choice and we can make that choice or we can incrementally try to move forward with solutions as, as best we can. Or we can, or we can, you know, aggressively, which we've seen proposed and supported by some of my colleagues as well over the past. So I just really feel like there is, it's okay to say that there's a both and here and that's not anything to shy away from because I think we're all seeking solutions. And I don't intend to point fingers or I just think naming is important. And moving forward with solutions is also important and balancing process and action is our job. And as policymakers, we have the role to do that in a way that allows us to continue to do the people in all capacities and roles. We have big, big issues that come with water, et cetera. So I, I, I think, I, I hear the concerns, I understand the nuances. I think moving forward in a way that allows more time for consideration and not have this being a first reading, I, I really appreciate that. I appreciate my colleagues recognizing that we can do that. And so I'm supportive of this direction. Sure, if there isn't enough time between now and then, you know, it's up to the mayor's discretion ultimately to agendize items. So if there is the need on the twenty sixth for the mayor to have this continued due to incompleteness, then we'll accept that and, and we'll continue to move on with our jobs, the business. So I, at this point, the motion and recognize the nuances associated with all of it and the challenges associated. I understand all of the feedback we've heard in regards to those. I recognize all of the comments that have been brought up by my colleagues and I too want to work towards solutions because I think inaction is also a, a choice that frankly, I'm just not okay with at this point. And I think we can actually get to a place where we can try to make people's lives better as well as protect our environment. So I, I appreciate, I appreciate the discussion this evening and I'm happy to take the vote and call the question at this time in regards to the proposal that's been brought before us in terms of the motion. So I'll go ahead and call that question.
Okay, the question has been called.
That would be a, a, a motion to call the question. It requires a second.
Thank you. Tony, I'll make a motion to call the question. I'll second that.
Ever since the motion's been made, I'm the second.
Yes. So now we will go to a vote. Thank you, Councilmember Cummings. So roll call vote, please.
So just to clarify, this is a vote to accept?
The motion.
It is a, it is a vote to call the question after which, if it passes, the motion will be taken up immediately without further debate.
I know, I mean, well, yeah, I, I'm, I, and I will just say, because I've heard from my colleagues that they are pretty comfortable with or recognize the nuances of this motion and had stated previously that they are supportive. So I.
Calentari Johnson?
I, and then I have a question for clarity.
Tony, should we get the question before we do the vote because it would halt discuss, further discussion, right?
Um, yeah, I think that's probably appropriate.
I just, the comments and my question was, do I hold those comments now that we've taken the vote? But I, I am also ready to take the vote.
Yeah, so the motion to call the question would end the debate.
Okay. I.
Uh, Brown?
No, because I have one more comment and I'm not sure how that's going to, people's comments are going to fit in if we do this, so no.
Cummings?
No, and I'll just say, we already limited the public's comments one minute. We didn't have a whole lot of public comments, I think. And this is a very important topic, so I think if we provide people with an opportunity to speak, that would be best.
Golda?
I.
Vice Mayor Brunner?
I.
And Mayor Myers is absent.
So you may now proceed directly to vote on the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, so we will move forward with a vote on the motion on the floor. By Councilmember Golda, seconded by Councilmember Calentari Johnson to continue the item of the meeting, to continue this item to the meeting of October twenty sixth, twenty twenty one, to allow for consideration of public comments on this draft ordinance and to allow time to prepare associated updates to the ordinance language. And two, to direct, to work with an ad hoc subcommittee to be appointed by the mayor to establish a subcommittee and begin exploring what a safe parking program can or should include, should one be established as part of or outside any future ordinance. May we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Watkins?
I.
Calentari Johnson?
I.
Brown?
I.
Cummings?
I, and for the record, I think that we need to extend the time for when this needs to come back.
Golda?
I.
Vice Mayor Brunner?
I.
And Mayor Myers is absent.
Okay, motion passes. I would just like to say that we have taken all the comments tonight from the public as well as from all the council members and we will be, whatever the subcommittee is appointed, all of these notes will be taken into consideration for the first reading. And in the meantime, for anybody who did not, was not able to call in for a public comment, you can always email the full council at city of Santa Cruz dot com. So that's council@cityofSantaCruz.com. We can also take handwritten letters or mail, snail mail to the city council offices at eight zero nine Center Street, room ten, is that correct, Bonnie Bush? And, um,
Sorry, I couldn't find my unmute. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. And other ways to reach out, you can email the council members individually and we hope to get this, all of the comments have noted and incorporated in, before the first draft is brought back for a reading. And with that, is there anything I am forgetting? Otherwise, this meeting would be adjourned? This meeting is adjourned?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor, for stepping in.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Goodbye.